Good evening, everyone. This is Mayor Vi Lyles. Today is May the 18th, and we are conducting our zoning meeting. And I call this meeting to order and welcome all of you who are watching us on either the government channel, the city's Facebook page, or the city's YouTube page. We want to especially thank the media for participating with us in this, as well as all of our residents. Tonight's zoning meeting is a virtual meeting that's being conducted in accordance with the electronic meeting statutes and those requirements of notice, access, and minutes. I also want to remind the council that all votes will be taken by roll call verbally today, from the, all the way from the hearings, closing, every state, every vote will be a roll call vote. So before I begin, I want to say happy birthday to Councilmember Mitchell. I bake him a cake, but I would probably eat it all myself, and that wouldn't be a good thing. So we owe you a cake when we get back, Smudgy. So let's go ahead and begin our introductions. As I've said, I'm Vi Lyles, Mayor, and we'll go in the order that you received your information.
Good evening, everyone. Happy birthday, Smudgy. This is Julie Isel, Mayor Pro Tem and serving at large.
Happy Monday, Tempelage Mira, at large.
We can't hear him.
Mr. Mitchell, take your mic off mute, please.
I'll call him again there. Is he on mute? Okay, all right, so...
Can you hear me?
Now we can. Mr. Mitchell?
Hello, Mayor, James "Smudgy" Mitchell, City Council at Large. Thank you.
All right.
Braxton Winston, at large.
Good evening, Larkin Eggleston, District 1.
Malcolm Graham, District 2.
Happy birthday, Smudgy. Victoria Watlington, District 3.
Happy birthday, Smudgy. This is Renee Johnson, District 4.
Good evening, everyone. Matt Newton, District 5.
Tarek Bakari, District 6. Councilmember Mitchell, happy birthday.
Ed Driggs, District 7. Smudgy will be around for social distance drinks after the meeting. Congratulations.
I think he has better plans than that, Mr. Driggs. We begin our meeting with an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation is made by a council member and is intended to solemnize our proceedings, and we understand that we have religious diversity in our community, including those without a religious faith. So tonight, we've asked Councilmember Winston to give our invocation or words of expression. Mr. Winston?
Yes, Mayor, so bear with me. I might have some camera trouble. It's been shutting out for some reason. Tonight, I will read a passage from Reverend Martin Luther King, a junior speech titled, "The Other America." I think it's particularly poignant in this time. "I want to discuss the race problem tonight, and I want to discuss it very honestly. I still believe that freedom is a bonus you receive for tackling the truth. Ye shall know the truth, and the truth shall set you free. And I do not see how we will ever solve the turbulent problem of race confronting our nation until there is an honest confrontation with it and a willing search for the truth and a willingness to admit the truth when we discover it." And so I want to use as a title for my lecture tonight, "The Other America." And I use this title because there are literally two Americas. Every city in our country has this kind of dualism, this schizophrenia, split into so many parts. And so every city ends up being two cities rather than one. There are two Americas. One America is beautiful for the situation. In this America, millions of people have the milk of prosperity and the honey of equality flowing before them. This America is the habitat of millions of people who have food and material necessities for their bodies, culture and education for their minds, freedom and human dignity for their spirit. In this America, children grow up in the sunlight of opportunity, but there is another America. This other America has a daily ugliness about it that transforms the buoyancy of hope into the fatigue of despair. In this other America, thousands and thousands of people walk the streets in search for jobs that do not exist. In this other America, billions of people are forced to live in vermin-filled, distressing housing conditions where they do not have the privilege of calling law, of having wall-to-wall carpeting, but all too often, they end up with wall-to-wall rats and roaches. Almost 40% of the Negro families of America live in substandard housing conditions. In this other America, thousands of young people are deprived of an opportunity to get an adequate education. Every year, thousands finish high school, reading at a seventh, eighth, and sometimes ninth grade level, not because they're dumb, not because they don't have the native intelligence, but because the schools are so inadequate, so overcrowded, so devoid of quality, so segregated, if you will, that the best in these minds can never come out. Probably the most critical problem in the other America is the economic problem. There are so many other people in the other America who can never make ends meet because their incomes are far too low if they have income, and their jobs are so devoid of quality. And so in this other America, unemployment is a reality and underemployment is a reality. Now let me finally say something in the realm of the spirit, and then I'm going to take my seat. Let me say finally that in the midst of the hollering, we have got to come to see that however much we dislike it, the destinies of white and black America are tied together. Now, the races don't understand this, apparently, but our destinies are tied together, and somehow, we must all learn to live together as brothers in this country, or we're all going to perish together as fools. Our destinies are tied together, whether we like it or not, culturally and otherwise. Every white person is a little bit Negro, and every Negro is a little bit white. Our language, our music, our material prosperity, and even our food are the amalgam of black and white and brown. John Donne was right. No man is an island, and the tide that fills every man is a piece of the continent, a part of the main. And he goes on toward the end to say, "Any man's death diminishes me because I'm involved in mankind. Therefore, it's not to know for whom the bell tolls; it's tolled for thee." Thank you.
Thank you. It's always a good thing to reflect on what Dr. King, the words that he gave to us, and they're very memorable. Thank you, Mr. Winston. We will now have Councilmember Mitchell stay the Pledge of Allegiance for us. Mr. Mitchell?
Gosh, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. I want to recognize that we have a zoning committee members that are on this call and can call in or are watching this, but we're recognizing, what I want to recognize, Sam Spencer, who is the Chair of the Zoning Committee, is on the phone and will be able to address questions as we go through the hearings and can ask questions that the other members of the zoning committee would text or send to him on any given petition. So with that...
Did I hear someone?
He was just thanking you.
Oh, so thank you. I'm sorry. It's hard, it's really a virtual meeting, and it's sometimes tough to hear. So I want to begin to have an understanding of our zoning process. It begins with applications, submitted to the planning staff for review. There are two types of items that we're, actions we're taking today. We will have decisions on hearings that have already been held, and the zoning committee has made a recommendation to us. And then we will also have hearings that we have people that signed up. There was a deadline by 9:00 a.m. this morning, so we have that list of folks that have called in, and I think we've technically checked everyone, and I hope it goes smoothly. On the hearings, we do have, we did ask people to sign up in support or in opposition. We have two hearings on our agenda tonight, item number 22, as well as item number 26, where we have people speaking in opposition to the petition. I would hope that those who are watching or on the phone right now, particularly on petition number 2019-114, this is our Atrium Hospital rezoning. I believe I have over 12 people that have said that they would like to speak against, and of course, they're 10 minutes, and so it's physically almost impossible to do this, and I would hope that we have selected and you've let the city clerk know those that actually want to speak as opposed to being just listed, to let us know that you're opposed to that action. On item number 25, petition 2020-027, we have one speaker against, and so that should be manageable. After the hearings, I wanted to say we will have the staff give us a short presentation. We will have to open and close every public hearing by roll call vote, and then the petition will go to the zoning committee of the Planning Commission for review and recommendations. Generally, we try to end by 10:00 p.m., and I would hope that that would be our goal. The planning staff has told me that if we can do that, we would have actually almost gotten caught up with and getting on, back on our regular schedule. So before we go to actual decisions on other items, I would like to recognize David Patine from the zoning staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to take a few moments with everybody to recognize one of our staff members in Planning Development that's going to be retiring at the end of the month, Kent Main. Kent, a lot of you have seen presented meetings. He's not with us this evening because we're going virtual here, but I'm sure he's out there watching us. So just wanted to thank Kent for almost 20 years of service to the city of Charlotte and the Planning Department, and want to thank him for helping me transition into this role, and thank him for all that he's done for us as city government and being a part of this process with everyone, so.
So everybody, a hand clap for it. Thank you, Kent. Really, sorry, I'm sure you'll be recognized by many of your colleagues and friends before this is all done and over.
Thank you.
So the first thing I need is a motion on the deferrals, and we can do these all-in-one motions, so I will read them and make sure that everybody has them as, and you can mark them in their agenda. Item number three, petition 2019-006, is a withdrawal of a petition. Can we combine withdrawals with the...
Yes, we have two, we have two withdrawals.
All right, two withdrawals. The second withdrawal we have is item number 16, 2019-166, for Canopy, Charlotte, and that hearing is a withdrawal of the petition as well. So could I have a motion for those petitions to be withdrawn?
Motion approved, withdrawals.
Second.
We have Mr. Eggleston and Mr. Driggs. Now we'll do a roll call vote for the deferrals. Julie, Mayor Pro Tem Julie Isel. Yep, yes. Ms. Esmera?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Just like...
Ms. Watlington? All right, I'll come back. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Aye, yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Thank you. That means that that motion passes. The next motion that we have are for those that are deferred, and so the first one is item 15, petition 2019-146, deferral until, all of these deferrals are until June the 15th. So I would just say that, I won't say the date again, June 15th. Item 16, petition 2019-166, nope, sorry. Item 17, petition 2019-168, Sunset Real Estate and Land. Item 18, petition number 2019-179, Ron Staley, Everday Homes. Item 19, 2020-002, The Drakeford Company. Item 23, 2020-004, Boulevard Real Estate Advisors. So if I can have a motion for the deferral to go...
Move to defer.
I need a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. I'm going to begin the roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Isel.
The mayor was item, was item 15 included in that?
Yes, I read that one first.
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, Mayor Pro Tem Isel?
Yes, in favor.
Ms. Esmera?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Okay, so now, when we have something that has changes after the committee vote, we will go to those items, and I will have to take that vote prior to going in that direction to make a decision. So now, what we're going to do is begin our decisions, and we'll start with item number And item number four has had changes since the zoning committee's adoption of the statement of consistency, so is there a motion that the changes are not significant?
Motion to not send back.
Thank you. I need a second?
Second.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Isel.
Yes.
In favor. Ms. Esmera?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
We will not be sending this back to the zoning committee, so this is a rezoning petition, 2019-126 by Harrison Tucker, for approximately four tenths of an acre along 17th and North Davison Street. It's in District 1. Current zoning is R8. Proposed recommended zoning is R2, RU2, Urban Residential Conditional. The staff and the petitioners recommend adoption of this petition. Do we have a motion to accept this?
Motion to adopt and approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to adopt and approve. So we'll begin, Mayor Pro Tem Isel.
Yes.
Ms. Esmera?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
So that item, that decision passes. Item, Agenda item number five, petition 2019-156 by Parkwood Plaza. This also has changes since the zoning committee has met, and so I'd like to have a motion...
Motion to not send back.
Second.
All right, thank you. We'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Isel.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Esmera?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Graham? Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
All right, so now that we don't have to send that back, that motion passes. This is for this petition, approximately a half acre, located at 1118 Parkwood Avenue. Current zoning is R5. The proposed zoning is Urban Residential Conditional. The staff and the zoning committee recommend approval of this petition. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt and approve.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt and approve. We'll go ahead with any discussion. All right, we'll start, Mayor Pro Tem Isel.
Yes.
Ms. Esmera? Yes. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Ms. Esmera?
Yes, I said yes, sorry.
Okay, I could not hear you, sorry. All right, so that item is approved. Agenda item number six, petition 2019-171 by Anthony Kuhn, for approximately two and a half acres on 300 North Tryon Street. The current zoning is I2, and the proposed zoning is Transit Oriented Development, Urban Center. The zoning committee and the staff recommend approval of this petition. Do I have a motion to adopt?
To adopt and approve.
Thank you.
Second.
And the second, so any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Mayor Pro Tem Isel.
Yes.
Ms. Esmera?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is item number seven, petition 2019-172 by Sharon Academy Properties, for approximately four acres located on the northeast corner of Tavola and Witchwood Drive. The current zoning is single-family residential, four units per acre. The proposed zoning is institutional. The zoning committee and the staff recommend approval of this item. Is there a motion?
Would you adopt and approve?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, Mayor Pro Tem Isel?
Yes.
Ms. Esmera?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
I think sometimes I wonder if we could... I think sometimes I wonder if we could exclude the motion makers from the roll call vote and just assume a yes, but I don't see the attorney.
Or, Madam Mayor, I assume this has been discussed, but would it be possible to do one voice vote and then count only if there's any dissent?
I am not allowed to do that by the statute that required for virtual meetings, that allows us to have virtual meetings.
Okay.
Yes. I thought of that, I did. I want you to know, I've thought about that a lot. The next item is item number eight, Petition 2019-176 by the airport for approximately 79 acres on the east side of Steel Creek Road. The current zoning is R3 with an airport overlay. The proposed zoning is I2 with airport overlay. The zoning committee and the staff recommend approval of this item. May I have a motion?
Come on.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All right, any discussion? All right, Mayor Pro Tim Iselt?
Yes.
Ms. Eszmera?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Winston? Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
That motion passes, that decision passes. Item number nine, a rezoning petition, 2019-178 by DRB Group for approximately 11 acres located on the east side of Rosel's Ferry Road. The current zoning is general industrial conditional. The proposed zoning is urban residential commercial conditional. The zoning committee voted six to one to approve this petition, and staff recommends approval of the petition. Do I have a motion?
The move?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Mayor Pro Tim Iselt?
Yes.
Ms. Eszmera?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
The motion passes. Agenda Item Number 10, zoning decision, 2019-181 by Clay Cooper Woda Cooper Development. This one needs a motion not to send back to the, but the changes that have been made since.
Shouldn't send back.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Mayor Pro Tim Iselt?
Yes.
Ms. Eszmera? Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
That motion passes. I think, did I miss anyone on the roll call? Ms. Eszmera? Okay, thank you. All right, so now we'll go, do I have a motion to adopt the zoning?
So move, Mayor, to approve and adopt the zoning petition.
Thank you.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All, hearing none. Mayor Pro Tim Iselt?
Yes.
Ms. Eszmera?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
That item passes. Agenda Item 11, zoning decision, 2019-183 by Rhino Partners Coffee, approximately a quarter of an acre located on the west side of the plaza. The current zoning is general business with pedestrian overlay, and the proposed zoning is general business pedestrian overlay optional. The zoning committee and the staff recommend approval of this petition. Do I have?
Motion to adopt and approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Mayor Pro Tim Iselt?
Yes.
Ms. Eszmera?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, the next petition is item number 12. Was this one that was, it's 12 was not deferred, right? Okay, so this is petition 2019-185 by Freedom Communities, approximately one and a half acres located on the south side of Tuckasiegee Road. The current zoning is single-family residential, five units an acre. The proposed zoning is urban residential commercial conditional district. The zoning committee and the staff recommend approval of this petition. Do I have a motion to accept the zoning committee's statement as our own?
Come on.
Second? Okay, all, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, let's go. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes.
Ms. Eszmera?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs? I'm sorry, Mr. Bakari? Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
All Republicans look alike, yes.
Thank you very much.
I get that all the time.
We're gonna have, I hear that line a lot, right? Okay, that item, that decision is approved. The next one is item 13, Petition 2020-036 by Charlotte Planning, Design, and Development, our team, for approximately a half acre west of Pecan Avenue, north of Independence. It's in District One. Current zoning is none, and they're asking for zoning of B2 general business pedestrian overlay. The zoning committee and the staff recommend approval of this petition. Is there a motion?
To adopt and approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, sorry, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes.
Ms. Eszmera, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
And Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Okay, so those are all of the council decisions for today, or this meeting. We are now going to go to the section of our hearings. And the first item that we're going to hear are two, well, the first two items are text amendments that have been submitted by our planning department, Charlotte Planning, Design, and Development. The first one is to modify the TOD, Transit Oriented Development, requirements to provide greater flexibility, address unintended consequences, provide consistency between sections, add missing standards, update selected standards, revise administrative authority, correct any inaccuracies in prior write-ups, and update the section references. Modify and PED applicability regulations as related to TOD, update, delete, and add definitions and graphics. The staff recommends approval of this document. Do, we don't have any, oh, we do not have any speakers signed up? All right, who's, we're going to have a brief presentation by?
This is Alan Goodwin of Planning, Design, and Development.
All right, thank you, Alan. If you would go ahead and do the presentation. We don't have any speakers, so as soon as the staff presentation is done, we can close the public hearing, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Alan, just let me know next line.
Members of the council, we're proposing a TOD text amendment, and just to bring you back a little bit, as you recall, last April, you approved four new transit-oriented development zoning districts. We followed that up by proactively resuming over 1,500 parcels of land along the Blue Line Transit Quarter in what we call the TOD alignment zoning to get the right zoning on the ground to implement the new ordinance. Staff has been using the new ordinance as well as design professionals and property owners for several months now. And as with any new ordinance, there were some things that were found, areas that we could improve or clarify, in some cases, correct inaccuracies, and other adjustments to make the ordinance effective. Right, please? So the reason we're doing this, or what the purpose of this text amendment is, as only said, to modify the TOD development requirements, to update, add, and delete definitions and graphics, and we also need to modify our PED applicability section, correct and oversight. But you can see on the screen some examples of how the actual ordinance will be adjusted. You can see some deletions and some new additions, removing graphics and so forth. Right? So what this text amendment does, it really, it focuses on nine general categories of modifications, and I'll just run through them. It provides additional clarity in regulations. It provides greater flexibility. It adds missing standards. It addresses unintended consequences of the new TOD ordinance. It provides consistency between sections, right? It corrects inaccuracies, revises administrative authority. It updates and revises graphics, and updates, adds, and deletes definitions. Right? The UDO Advisory Committee, or the OAC, has been involved with us as we crafted this text amendment. They've been briefed on it and been provided an opportunity to provide their comments and feedback, and several committee members have done so, and their comments have been incorporated into our proposed text amendment that you're hearing about tonight. This petition is consistent with the city council adopting transit station area plans along the Link's Blue Line and Link's Blue Line extension. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, do we have a motion? Any questions?
To close?
Any questions?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes.
Ms. Eszmera? Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston? Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
If I don't have an answer, and they are there, that's counted as a yes vote. Is that through the virtual meetings or not?
As long as you get six votes.
Six votes. Okay, so that closes that public hearing. The next item is item number 21, Petition 20, I'm sorry, I skipped one, didn't I?
No, it's correct.
That's right. Oh, now we come to item 21, rezoning petition, 2019-113 by the Charlotte Mecklenburg Housing Authority for a text amendment. This text amendment adds heli tops limited as an accessory use. I'm assuming that's where you can land a helicopter. Accessory use allowed with one prescribed condition in the mixed-use development district. Staff recommends approval of this. We have, we do not have speakers signed up. Are we, I'm sorry, we do have one speaker. We have one speaker sign up. Does the staff want to present any material before the speaker?
No.
We will not have a staff presentation. Mr. Carmichael, we're on the text amendment that you signed up to address.
Yes, ma'am, can you hear me?
I can.
Would you want me to start?
Yes, please.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tim, members of council, and zoning committee, I'm John Carmichael here on behalf of the petitioner. The request, as you stated, is just to add heli tops limited as an accessory use in the mud zoning district. Allowing heli tops would be consistent with allowing heli tops in other office, business, and industrial districts in Charlotte, and heli tops as accessory use are allowed running out in office and business districts. They're allowed in institutional districts, research districts, and industrial districts. A health institution's allowed in mud under your current ordinance, so it would only be logical that a helipad would also be allowed in mud. My sense, without knowing, of course, is this was just probably an oversight when the ordinance was drafted. I don't know that, but that would be my sense, because it's allowed in so many other business and office districts. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Eggleston?
Just, if staff could quickly address if they have any concerns about types of uses in mud, that we might not want to see this, and if there's, if we should be honing in more specifically, or if they feel comfortable that this doesn't open up unintended consequences.
All right, Mr. Patine?
So I'm not aware of any concerns from a staff standpoint. If there's some, you know, limited direction that we'd like to continue to look at between the hearing and a final decision, to see if there's any refinement that needs to be done to specify that it's for office buildings in mud, or buildings of a certain height in mud, we can certainly take a look at that. But I'm not aware of any concerns that have been brought up to this point at a staff level, but certainly we can continue to flesh those out between the hearing and the decision.
All right.
That's all I've got.
Any other questions?
And Madam Mayor, it's Ed Driggs. I wanted to clarify, just for the record, it's the Charlotte Mecklenburg Hospital Authority. It is the petitioner, and I'd like to move to approve.
No, this is, this is a close, this is the hearing.
Yeah, to close then.
All right, Mr. Winston? No, I have, I have another council member that wants to speak. Mr. Winston?
Go ahead. Just wondering, I think Mr. Carmichael said that they were just going through the text and saw this might have been an oversight, but what has the current ordinance limited? What problems have we run into, given the current language of the ordinance?
Mr. Carmichael, would you like to address that?
Well, if, yeah, I'm happy to try. I'm not aware of any, was the question what problems you've had with helipads in other districts? Was that the question?
No, what problems have we had in terms of the current language for heli tops? What limitations?
that, that has the trauma center that requires the ability to land helicopters and have patients come by way of helicopters. I hope I answered it.
So I think, I think, so, I think what you're saying is, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, that further hospital, further development of hospitals could, access to those hospitals for patients could be limited, given the current ordinance language?
That's, yeah, that, thank you. That's, that's right. The, and if you can, if a health institution is allowed in mud, at least to me, it seems logical that a, a limited helipad would also be allowed, because hospitals care for patients who have experienced severe trauma and are transported by way of helicopters. So, yes, I would agree with what you just said.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor, I have a question.
All right. Ms. Watlington?
Yep. So, and this maybe goes along the lines of what some others have said, but I just wanted to make sure, I'm clear, so currently in our mixed-use development, there's residential. Are there any, or what if any, are the current restrictions to having limited heli tops near residential? I realize that the zoning destinations are listed here, but is there any proximity, any proximity considerations? I think about noise and the noise ordinance when it, as it relates to the airport, but with helicopters. What protects, or what protects a resident from having a helipad essentially in their backyard? And I'm being hyperbolic, but is there anything else that would protect our neighborhoods?
That'd be something, we'd have to take a look a little bit further into it and give you some feedback and a follow-up report. I don't know the heli stop ordinance off the top of my head, so be certainly, certainly happy to look that up and, and give you some information back. But a lot of the other districts where these are allowed, do allow residential uses, so it's certainly something, there, there may be some conditions in there that apply to in putting a heli stop in some of those districts if there's residential nearby, but without having the ordinance right in front of me, I'd have to take a look and, and put that in a follow-up report for you.
Okay, yes, please.
I could, I could further that, too, if you'd like. The, the condition in our ordinance now for heli stops in all the districts that I referred to earlier, the office and the business district, the condition is that it complies with all applicable FAA regulations.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Not, kind of have a motion to close the hearing.
Tell me.
Second?
Okay.
All right, all in favor? Mayor Protim, aye, so.
I thought you said there was one speaker in opposition.
Not, not on this petition.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That was Jane.
Okay, in favor, aye.
Ms. Esmera?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Aye.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
So the motion passes. The next item is agenda number 22. The petition is 2019-114 by the Charlotte Mecklenburg Hospital Authority. The location is approximately 70 acres bounded by Scott, East Moorhead, and Little Sugar Creek. It's in District One. The current zoning is office, office conditional, neighborhood business, general business, single-family residential, and multifamily residential. The proposed zoning is mud, mixed-use development optional with five-year vested rights. Staff recommends approval of this petition among, upon resolution of several outstanding issues related to environment and requested technical provisions. I believe that we have approximately 20 people signed up to speak. And there is a, there is a group for, and again, so there will be 10 minutes for each side. I am going to read the names of the groups of four, and then the clerk will begin. Once we get to the first person that we would have speak, they will start with 10 minutes. When that 10 minutes is timed out. Now, just because I want to be very careful, we have a group of people that have signed up, and there are approximately 12 people signed up in opposition. And I understand that several people have decided that they just wanted to sign up, that there would be people that would speak, but because we have to be fair, and because I don't, I'm not, I'm privy to this information and agreement, I'm going to read out that complete list, and the three people, or if anyone wants to speak, I will go in the order that they have. And Madam Clerk, do they have the listing of the sign-up sheet? Oh, no, ma'am. Without the sign-up sheet, so I'm just going to make, ask those questions to make sure that everybody's here, because this is a virtual meeting, and we can't see everyone gathered in the chamber. And I want to be as fair as possible with the, with everyone having the opportunity to be heard. So, we'll have a brief staff presentation. Following that, the first speaker that we have sign up is Mary Gertner. The second, this is in favor, John Carmichael, followed by Sajiu Joy, Bennett Thompson, Colin Lane, Ryan Lewis, and Steve Blakeney. So I will be calling on Ms. Gertner to, as the first person, and Mr. Carmichael, and the remaining of the group has 10 minutes altogether. So I don't know if you are all aware of each other, but hopefully that can be worked out in advance. All right, so I'm going to call on Mr. Patine for a staff review.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Petition 2019-114, 70 acres out in the Dilworth and area, in our King's Drive area as well. This is the atrium campus, main campus in Midtown. The current zoning, as we discussed, has several different zoning districts on it, O2, O6, B1, B1 PED, B2 PED, R6, and R22 MF. The petition itself is proposing to go to MUD-O, so all the 70 acres would be consolidated into one zoning district, and that would be a mud optional district. The plan is, a policy guideline is for the Midtown Moorhead Cherry Plan, and it does recommend some different uses, residential office, residential office retail for portions of the site. And then the Dilworth Land Use and Streetscape Plan is also in play with this petition, and that also recommends institutional uses, greenway uses, residential up to five units per acre, and residential up to 22 units per acre. There's also a small portion of the site which is located in the PET overlay, and the MUD-O would supersede that PET overlay, but some of the design standards would still be incorporated as a result of that mud, mud zoning district. So the petition itself is broken down into eight development areas. We noted that petition, or development areas E and F are really devoted only to open space and tree save areas, so there's no real development that'll go on in those. They are dedicated just to open space and tree save. There's some maximum gross floor areas involved. 425 multifamily dwellings are being proposed within the site, also some detached duplex, triplex, or quadruplex units. There are also a provision for the helipads. Should that text amendment that we just heard on petition 113 be approved, development areas A, B, and D would have an allotment for helipads, would only be allowed in those areas, even though the site would be zoned mud, it's still restricted to those areas through that conditional plan. There's also a number of transportation mitigations and improvements, which I'll defer to CDOT on here in a, in a brief moment. There's also buffers and landscapes adjacent to the single-family uses. And the petition also commits to greenway improvements during construction, along, as well as a detour route during some of those improvements, and a minimum of three accessible connections from the site to the greenway, which is, runs right in front of the campus. As you can see, this just gives you a highlight of the development areas. D and H are the ones that are mainly along King's Drive, along with B and portions of A, and then E and F, you can see, are those open space and tree save areas. We do have a potential open space and tree save area, along with some BMP areas there right by the greenway, next to development area H, and that's just, like I said, a breakdown, and you can see the greenway improvements with that red arrow down towards the bottom of the, the colored part of the map there. Just a visual view of some of the landscape buffers that would be proposed. I know there's also been some discussions, ongoing discussions with some of the residents in these areas about the landscape buffers and the type of trees and vegetation that, that would be proposed to be planted there. I'll let the petitioner speak to any developments that have occurred since this plan has come in. Again, a lot of those discussions have been ongoing even up through this past Friday. So, like I said, I'll defer to the petitioner on some of those. And just to give you some ideas of traffic impact analysis, there was a TIA done for this project with substantial improvements that would be proposed. They did study 22 intersections. So I'm going to turn it over quickly to Felix Obergang with CDOT, so he can walk you through some of those from the TIA.
Thank you. Felix Obergang with CDOT. To give you some bearings, let me see if I can get my cursor out here. To give you some bearings, you've got King's Drive on the, on the top part of the slide. You have Moorhead, runs east-west, and then you've got Kennelworth and Scott that run parallel to each other. You have East Boulevard that runs east-west, and then you've got the Shear Creek Greenway that runs along the site. Next slide. The, the petition was required to provide a traffic impact study analysis by CDOT and NCDOT team. As part of our review, we coordinated with CADA to provide a comprehensive transportation The development had studied 22 intersections, as Dave mentioned. It's being developed in two phases. Phase one will be completed in 2025. Phase two will be completed in 2030. Can we go to the next slide? Okay. The development will provide multimodal improvements. It will provide vehicular capacity and pedestrian improvements at several intersections within the site and around the site. The petition is going to reconstruct and widen the current multi-use path for the Little Sugar Creek Greenway, which is the arrow, the blue arrow that's running north-south. The development is going to construct new streets within the development that will accommodate vehicles, bicyclists, and pedestrians. We coordinated with the Dilworth Community Association surrounding neighbors, and the development team on a new Loop Road connection to Scott Avenue. Okay. Sorry about that. The, the Loop Road is shown.
I'm sorry, this is a weekly test for weather or something. Okay.
I thought that was Mark's internet.
Okay, let's continue, Felix. Please, keep on.
Yeah, sorry about that. The Loop Road will connect at Scott Avenue, right here. It's, it's where the current driveway connection is located. Also, as part of the Loop Road, they are going to provide a multi-use path that will connect the, this neighborhood, if you can see my cursor, to the new Shear Creek Greenway that's going to get reconstructed. In addition, the petition is going to, is going to provide a transportation demand management plan that will provide strategies to encourage its employees to use transit, rideshare, and bike facilities to reduce vehicular trips in the surrounding area. That's all I have.
Great. All right, thank you, Felix. Staff does recommend approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to environment, and I believe requested technical revisions, so just some minor things that we need to run through. Again, this plan has been somewhat fluid, and lots of ongoing discussions between staff, CDOT, the community. As Felix mentioned, that realignment of Loop Road is something that just came about late last week and into today. So, again, this is, you know, a lot of moving parts, but staff does recommend approval of this petition. We will continue to work with the petitioner and the community, and CDOT and NCDOT, and look forward to bringing this to you guys for a decision in the coming months. So, now with that, I'll turn it over to the petitioners and the public.
All right, so we're going to start with the 10 minutes for those that are speaking in favor of this petition. The first speaker that I have is Mary Gertner, and John Carmichael, and Sajiu Joy. Mary Gertner? Are you on the line?
Mayor, this is John Carmichael. I talked to Mary today, and she was going to allow us to go first, but I wanted to make sure she was, she was on the line. Do y'all know she's here?
We're, we'll.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
And we told, we, we, we told Mary we allowed, we would provide.
All right, so Mr. Carmichael, if you, as long as you take, if you can work with the rest of your group for the 10 minutes, is there anyone else that needs to have any adjustment on my list?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so you'll just leave room or time for Ms. Gertner to speak, and why don't you go ahead and proceed?
Okay. Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Protim, and members of the city council, the zoning committee, I'm John Carmichael. With me tonight are Dr. Joy, Atrium's chief medical officer, and our rezoning team. Do we have our slides, Dave?
We're coming up.
Here we are.
They're up.
That's, that's not ours. That's, that's Deb Edwards' slide.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll work on that. These meetings going virtual have some drawbacks.
Is the clock running?
No.
We hit the timeout button for you.
Yeah, we're, oh, yeah, the clock has not started. No, sorry. We're, we're going to be careful about the clock tonight.
We're pretty tight, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What's going on? Trying to look at the slides, but I feel, I feel photo-heavy, and it takes a while.
I'm understanding that photos take a good bit of energy to be presented to you, so we're going to just give it a moment.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Spencer, please, I just wanted to let you know, if you have any questions, please make sure that you let us know, and we'll get those answered from the zoning committee as well, or on the, on the record for, to be answered.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, we, we are getting the petition uploaded now, or the presentation, so bear with us. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Carmichael, your deck is loaded, and we'll start the 10 minutes now.
Thank you so much. Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Protim, members of council, the zoning committee, I'm John Carmichael. With me tonight are Dr. Joy, Atrium's chief medical officer, and our rezoning team. Next slide. The subject site is the Carolinas Medical Center main campus and certain adjacent parcels of land. This request is the result of Atrium's need to modernize and update its facilities. Next slide. Dr. Joy, this shows the ages of some of the facilities. Dr. Joy will speak to this in a moment. Next slide. This is a video that depicts, there should be a prior slide, this is a video that depicts some of the proposed improvements, including those to the adjacent Little Sugar Creek Greenway.
Okay, I don't know what's going on.
We'll have to move forward from the video.
Hold on, Mr. Carmichael.
We'll have to move forward from the video, because we had trouble loading videos earlier today during a meeting.
Next slide. Well, actually, Dr. Joy, why don't you speak?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to present to this council and, and mayor. Yeah, as, as John mentioned, I'm Sajiu Joy, and the chief medical officer at Atrium Carolinas Medical Center. And I'm here to discuss the challenges with our aging hospital facility, and why this rezoning is an exciting and critical step in our ability to improve health, elevate hope, and advance healing. I'd like to begin, begin by telling you why Atrium Carolinas Medical Center is such an amazing place. Above all, we're here to serve our community, and our passion for caring for people is what drives our team every day. CMC cares for the most critically ill patients in our region, and we take pride in our ability to deliver the most advanced care for any and all who arrive at our door. We are the go-to center in our region for health-related crises and emergencies. We are the go-to center in our region for health-related crises and emergencies such as the COVID-19, and we handle them seriously, efficiently, and effectively. Each year, we see more emergency visits, hospital admissions, babies delivered, surgeries, and organ transplants than any other hospital in the state of North Carolina. Here are some of the other reasons we need a new bed tower and rehabilitation hospital. Number one, our facilities are outdated. As Mr. Carmichael shared, there are segments of our hospital that are over 70 years old. So we're proud of the outstanding care we deliver, but medical advancements require different spaces than 70 years ago, even 30 years ago, when many of our buildings were opened. The equipment to care for the most complex cardiac procedures, for example, require the size equivalent of two of our rooms today. Our current operating rooms are 40% smaller than the industry best practice with infrastructure that's at the end of its useful life. For example, our IMRI, a cutting-edge machine used in brain surgery, can't fit in many of our current operating rooms, and using multiple types of equipment during a single case is challenging. Number two, our emergency department is maxed out. We are the region's most advanced trauma center, but our ER isn't large enough to handle the volume of patients seek our care each day, resulting in long wait times and as anyone who's needed that service at CMC has likely experienced. We even had to add a temporary tent expansion to handle the COVID-19 community needs. Number three, the halo effect of new facility improves our reputation and chance to recruit and retain the best providers. This allows things like our advanced COVID surge forecasting, as well as the in-house laboratory testing that we had available because of our specialists who work with Atrium Health that allowed us to anticipate the volume increases, as well as the rapid turnaround times for testing that other parts of the country really didn't even have. This enabled us to keep our community spread low and conserve PPE. Our plan is to totally redesign patient care, the patient care space to fix these issues and care for greater number of more complex patients. How are we going to do that? We're going to have flexible floor plans that'll provide adaptability to care for patients with different needs. We'll have larger spaces that allow clinicians and equipment to reach a patient. We'll have universal room design that'll prevent errors that can occur when providers work in a non-standard environment. Transportation of patients and families and visitors, that'll be kept separate from where teammates, providers, and resources are transported. Finally, and most importantly, we strive to deliver the best and most outstanding patient and family experience we can. We want inviting healing spaces with more light and better design. We will learn from our former patients and design around their experiences. So in summary, as Mr. Winston referred to Dr. King's speech, our destinies are tied together. Charlotte is a world-class city. We want it to be the very best and to continue to provide world-class health care, the type of care our city needs and deserves. We are proud of our history and of the care we deliver to our patients and families. This project allows us to continue our mission. This investment back into our community will allow us to take care of friends, families, and neighbors for decades to come. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Dr. Joy. Really appreciate it. You have about...
Thank you. We also have to, we've run out of time, so we'll skip some slides. Next slide. Next slide, next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. One more slide. Next slide. I just want to tell you about some of the changes to the plan. We've had many meetings with area residents. We thank them for their time. Development Area D is next to King's Drive. We reduced the maximum heights, excuse me, we stepped down the heights from 250 feet to 200 feet and to 40 feet towards King's Drive. Next slide. Development Area H is the next slide. This is southern edge of the site. We reduced the height of the buildings from 150 to 100. We stepped down the heights of the buildings from 100 feet to 60 feet to 40 feet towards exterior boundary lines. Removed parking structures as an allowed use. Removed the connection from the Greenway Trail to Lombardi. Next slide. Next slide. The development areas E and F, next to Fountain View, they would be devoted to open space and tree save, however, the Loop Road could encroach into the edge of those areas. The Loop Road's been realigned from the green to the purple, as Felix mentioned, and Fountain View would not connect to the campus as a result of this development. Next slide. Development Area G, we worked hard with the DCDA. We've divided Development Area G into four areas designated as G1 through G4, and we've limited the uses on G2, G3, and G4, most specifically limited to residential uses in Area G4. Next slide. We've also agreed to put a landscape buffer on the east side, which is the King's Drive side of Little Sugar Creek, as shown on this exhibit, to provide additional screening. I'm going to turn the rest of my time over to Mary Gertner. Ms. Gertner?
Mary, good to see you again. You have two minutes.
Ms. Gertner?
Ms. Gertner, sorry. You, I'm sorry. Good to see you, and now you have two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. While I am in favor of the rezoning, I'd like to share a story about Atrium that shocked me and shows a serious shortcoming in part of the plan. A while back, I was headed into Old City Hall by police headquarters when I ran across a young woman with a very bloody chin.
Ms. Gertner, we cannot hear you very well. I think, speak more directly into your mic.
Okay. A while back, I was headed into Old City Hall by police headquarters when I ran across a young woman with a very bloody chin, holding her baby, who also had blood on his cheek. Each was clearly in distress. I suggested we go into the police station for help. Initially, she said no, saying she had to catch another bus to get the baby to daycare out on the plaza. When I asked her what happened, she said she tripped and fell doing off the bus. I convinced her to go inside the police station, and then the paramedics were called to help her with it. An officer assured the young woman he would give her her wife to the daycare and asked her which she worked. She said Atrium Healthcare at the main campus. This Atrium Healthcare employee had to take at least two buses to get her child to daycare, and then a third bus just to get to work. At the end of the day, she had to do everything in reverse. My comments this evening concern the plan 425, all to family units of housing. On February 12, during the Gilworth Community Association meeting, an Atrium representative said, and it was quoted in the minutes, that any housing would be workforce housing. Just recently, Atrium announced it would raise its minimum wage to $13.50. So think about this, a full-time and minimum wage of 40, Atrium Healthcare earns $28,080 annually and will not be able to afford very housing Atrium plans to build. That's just not right. I support these housing units, but they should be carefully planned to serve a mix of incomes ranging from 30% AMI to workforce development housing to help address Charlotte's affordable housing needs. As the largest employer in Charlotte, Atrium Healthcare has an obligation to be part of this meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Carmichael, I think you have 30, I'm looking, 40 seconds left.
One other thing that, or two other things we've done is when Atrium is reconstructing the Greenway, they did agree to keep that portion of the Greenway behind the King's Drive residents along its current alignment, so as to maintain the status quo for access to that Greenway Trail. And then with respect to the helipads on top of the new bed tower, they would be located on the rear or western half of that bed tower. This is a lot of information in a very quick period of time. We're happy to answer your questions. Sorry it's been so rushed.
No.
We appreciate, by the way, once again, the time the neighbors have devoted and also the time the planning staff and CDOT have devoted to this matter.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you.
Now, I'm going to read a list of the people that have signed up to speak against, and I don't know how, if this is organized or not, but we'll do our very best to keep to the 10 minutes. There will be some need for some people to either speak for 45 seconds and be done, or if you're going to have a longer speech, some coordination of how this is done. Otherwise, not everyone will be heard. All right, so in opposition to this petition, I have Deborah Edwards, I'm apologizing if I mispronounce any name, Lesleyan Farman and Roberta Farman, Robert Lentz, Betsy Turner, Lee Teeter, Mary DeShans, John DeShans, Chris Gula, Suzanne Robichek, John Kelly, Effie Kelly, and Cara Judge. Is there anyone on this call that would like not to speak if you're on the phone? Is there anyone that would like, that has called in that would not like to speak?
So they're in as attendees, and we would, we're going to have to unmute them.
Okay, we're going to have to unmute you, so I can't ask that question, so excuse me, I thought I would be able to do that. So we'll just start with Deborah Edwards, and I will try, I will say when two minutes are up at each, after every two minutes, we'll let the clerk announce two minutes gone, another four minutes down, just so we can make sure everyone's aware. All right, Ms. Edwards? Deborah Edwards?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you start the time, Madam Mayor, may I just say that I will be speaking on behalf of most of those people on your list. We thought that there would just be three of us speaking, Robert Lentz, Lee Teeter, and myself. You just mentioned Cara Judge, and we have not coordinated with her. I apologize for that. I'll do my best to speak very quickly and leave her a little time. My husband Michael and I and our two daughters live on Fountain View Street on the hospital's southern border, basically between the hospital and East Boulevard. We're longtime Charlotte residents. We own a local small business and we, manufacturing plant we've managed to keep open during the pandemic with all 65 of our mostly hourly employees. Having just three or four minutes at a virtual hearing to defend a neighborhood's homes seems incredibly inadequate, so I and the more than 20 other households that I'm representing tonight created and submitted a detailed position paper to you that we pray you'll take the time to read. We know you're very busy. It's not that long, about four written pages and some really simple but informative maps. Because of time limitations, I'm going to show you just three of those tonight. The first slide here is our residential neighborhood as it existed in 1970, greets the neighborhood, the residences, res the hospital. Our paper shows you map by map by map, decade by decade, the hospitals kind of strategic creep into this decade, into this neighborhood. We'll skip over all of those and go to the next slide, which is the neighborhood in 2020. The pink is the strategically acquired properties by the hospital. And then if you go to Slide 3, that is what our neighborhood will look like if these 33 residential properties are rezoned. The fact is that Atrium has for decades used an outdated law to buy and hold these homes without paying property taxes, keeping many of them empty for years, letting some dilapidate and driving down surrounding property values. Now, if that isn't bad enough, now this rezoning converts over half the residential properties to mud. And if that's not bad enough, their dispersed remaining eight properties, those last few pink ones you see, give them total control of the residential area. Atrium's checkerboarding of our neighborhood has created a complete monopoly on the remaining privately held homes. Basically, nothing can or will happen in this area without Atrium. This total control over not only their own property, but mine and my neighbors as well will be exacerbated by this rezoning. And it's all subsidized by the city and our own tax dollars. Look, we accept that the end is near for the few remaining homes in this area, you might as well accept it too, but we don't want and should not be limited to only one potential buyer, Atrium. And that's the situation that they have strategically created. Now, we know there's a better alternative that involves private, tax-paying, visionary development, including workforce housing and other community and hospital priorities.
So we've got, you've had three minutes, just the, three minutes have been taken. Go ahead.
Thank you, I'm about to finish up. That plan requires Atrium's cooperation, but you should wonder, as I do, why they're not actively engaged in such a legacy-building opportunity. The fact is that City Ordinance Section 9.8510 basically requires counsel to ask these questions. So we don't oppose the hospital's purity to grow. Dr. Joy's speech was compelling, but we ask that you delay your ruling until you get a deeper understanding of what's really going on here, that this rezoning be contingent on Atrium working with the neighborhood on something that's better for the neighborhood and the whole community, as well as the hospital, and otherwise, development areas EF and G should be removed from their rezoning petition so as to retain their residential character. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person I have is Lesla, Leslin Farman or Roberta Farman. Are you going to speak? Are the Farmans on the line? Tonight, we'll go to Robert Lentz.
Hello, just attempting to unmute.
We can hear you now, yes, Mr. Lentz.
Excellent. Hello, and thank you for your time tonight. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of over 30 residents and homeowners on South King's Drive on the east side of the Atrium property, who all strongly oppose the current version of this rezoning request. I agree with Deborah that the current plans and zoning proposal that you see tonight are not reflective of considerate planning. Our overarching argument is that decisions in this design are being made to optimize for the impact on the hospital's bottom line and not on preserving the quality neighborhoods that surround it. Contrary to Mr. Carmichael's claims, they are not addressing our biggest concerns with this rezoning request. As residents on South King's Drive, our primary concern is with the proposed building height of the new hospital bed tower. Nowhere else in the city of Charlotte is city council approving buildings of this height so close to residential properties. Please do not make this the first case in which you do that. We would like to see the maximum building height in all of Development Area D reduced to 200 feet. We have made this request numerous times of the Atrium representatives, but they refuse to yield because of the impact on construction costs of the project. Second, we believe this rezoning request represents an insufficient step down on the east side of the property. We request that you only approve this rezoning petition if Atrium extends the 40-foot max height buffer up to 250 feet into the property on the east side of Development Area D. Now, now please note that this will allow them to build the current design that they're proposing, but it eliminates the excessive wiggle room that they are attempting to work into the rezoning. Wiggle room that would enable them to break their promises and ultimately build the tower closer to our homes after rezoning approval. The mere presence of this excessive wiggle room is a clear indication that they do not plan on acting in good faith, and we certainly do, if not, trust them, so hope that we can get your support to increase this buffer and ensure they are held accountable. Third, we are highly concerned about the proximity of the helipad to our homes. This current plan calls for a helipad to be located within a few hundred feet of our homes. Please consider for a second the impact if somebody built a helipad in your backyard. This is just one more piece of evidence that this is not the optimal location for a large bed tower. Development Area D and this corner of the 70-acre site is not an office in an industrial complex. It's next door to people's homes, so approving a zoning that allows for a helipad in this area feels completely out of line. However, look, assuming we can't get that changed and can't get your support in helping us that, we ask you to make your approval at least contingent on written detailed helipad distance agreements, light and noise mitigation elements, that we as residents cannot seem to get Atrium to formally commit to ourselves.
We have two, two minutes left, and I didn't know if Miss, if Betsy Turner or Lee Teeter were going to speak.
Yep. I just want to closing, in closing, say, look, zoning committee, city council, we need your help. Please do not approve this request with at least some of these elements that I've brought up tonight that we are unable to negotiate ourselves due to our size.
Thank you. All right, so Ms. Turner, Betsy Turner? Lee Teeter?
Mr. Lee Teeter, can you hear me?
Yes, and we have, you have two minutes, and then I'd like to leave 30 seconds for Ms. Judd, who was not aware that there were 20, 12 speakers signed up. So is Ms. Judd on the, can you check this out, see if Ms. Judd is called in? Okay, all right, would you go ahead? Two minutes, Mr. Teeter.
Okay, my name's Lee Teeter. I live at 1716 Lombardi Circle with my wife and two kids. My wife bought the property in 1995. After we got married, I designed the house and took about two and a half years to build the house and put everything we wanted into the house. And so now we've got a tremendous amount of dollar investment, time investment. We have major concerns that the Atrium rezoning, which they have done some things to make it better, is still gonna be a negative impact on our residential retail value of our home and the neighbors also. We've got several neighbors on the street that renovated their homes and put substantial money in it. We've got two seminarian high-end condo buildings that have been put in the past few years, and one of them's right beside my house. They still have two units that they can't sell and they keep, I think they've been trying to sell it for a year. And we got a, a house down the street that has had two contracts fall through because they found out what Atrium was getting ready to do and put these monster buildings behind our houses and, and just, you know, take away from the residential neighborhood feel. We've got people that bought houses within the past year, now they wish they hadn't because they feel like the, the neighborhood's gonna be ruined with all the changes that are going on. There's been tremendous amount of stress and strain put on all the neighbors because they're concerned about what kind of marketability, if they need to sell the house, who's gonna buy it? Who's gonna pay them the replacement cost on what it's gonna take to buy another house of similar quality and construction materials and size that they can afford in the Deelworth neighborhood? And so a lot of screening needs to be done on the back of the houses to, you know, we've got 30-foot trees with a six-foot painting wall on the back of our house, and they're talking about putting in a 16-foot tree. Well, that, that puts me 20 feet above any that they're gonna put in there. If the tree takes three or two and a half.
Mr. Teeter, that, that, that's the 10 minutes. And I was informed that Ms. Judd, that Mr. Lentz was speaking for Cara Judd. So I know that there are a number of people that signed up and were not able to speak, but our rules are, we try to get it organized in virtual meetings. It's a little bit more difficult to do that, so I hope you'll understand, but we do our very best. So now, we would open up the council members for questions, and I believe that, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Carmichael, you have two minutes rebuttal, excuse me.
Okay, you ready for me?
I, hold on, we're almost ready. We're ready, Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you. Just a couple, thank, one in response to Mr. Lentz, who, who we spoke with as recently as this morning. I did not claim in my presentation that we had resolved all their concerns. What I said was, we've had many, many, many meetings, and we've made changes to the plan in an effort to address concerns. I understand that he's concerned about the height, I know that others are, and so there are things that we have tried to do to address concerns that we're able to do, and there are some things that we have not been able to do, but I wanna make that clear that I did, we didn't represent that his concerns were, were alleviated. In terms of the helipads, we spoke with him again this morning, Mr. Lentz, and we're looking at some sound mitigation measures that we will follow up with him, which we will obviously do. In terms of Ms. Edwards, we have made concessions and worked with the DCBA to, to restrict the uses in Development Area G and Development Area E and Development Area F, so as to best preserve the character of, of that neighborhood. One thing we did do early on was put in our notes that there would not be a connection to Fountain View from Loop Road until such time that all of the lots on Fountain View, if they ever are, are redeveloped for multifamily or non-residential uses, at which time the developer of that project could make a connection to Loop Road. And that's something that, that CDOT wanted. We also worked in connection on the, with the realignment of Loop Road on Scott Avenue. We understand there are some concerns, we'll continue to have discussions. I don't think anybody would, could look, look in on and tell you, we haven't been available and haven't made ourselves available to talk about concerns. We will continue to do, to that. Likewise, they have made themselves available. So that's not a pat on my back, that's just a recognition of the effort that everybody's put into this. But those are, those are sort of my thoughts on what was presented, but.
Barrett, thank you for having those thoughts. Your two minutes are up. I just wanted to remind anyone watching this that anyone in this community can submit written comments to the clerk until tomorrow at 11:59. So it has to be before 12 o'clock noon tomorrow. I'm at midnight, sorry, PM, I can't read what's on my own writing. And so what we, I would like to suggest is that here is the website, cityclerk@charlottenc gov, cityclerk@charlottencgov. If you're watching this and have any comments, if you would send those to the city clerk, they will be distributed to the city council members this week. All right, so we're gonna start off with the district representative, Mr. Eggleston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to all of the, the speakers tonight. This site is very interesting because it's got borders far from each other that have very different sets of concerns. So I know it's been complicated for everybody involved to try to address concerns on one side of the site that might be entirely different than concerns on the other side of the site, but certainly do appreciate that John and that team have continued to try to make progress on addressing those. I know some of them likely will not be addressed completely, but I think there's been progress made even in the last couple of days. I do also wanna thank the Deelworth Community Association Land Use Committee, Valerie Preston, Ellen Cederella, and that whole team. They have spent countless hours working with John and the Atrium team there to also try to get all of those concerns voiced and addressed, and I think a lot of progress has been made since we started with this. A couple of things that I want to, John and his team, and if he feels the need to respond, that's fine, if not, that's fine as well, but I do think there's a little more work to do. Right now, the DCA is kind of formally agnostic. They have not taken a for or a against stance on this petition. I know they're pleased with some of the progress, progress that's been made, but hoping to see a little more, particularly as it relates to building standards, landscape plans, traffic construction plans, and commitments. And I know as well, in speaking with Mr. Lentz this weekend, and then John Carmichael, I think some progress has been made in terms of tightening up the allowable area for that maximum height that Mr. Lentz discussed. I think that line has been moved back away from the residences to some degree, and I would encourage Mr. Carmichael and the folks at Atrium to see if they can tighten that up even more. Certainly, we understand that with a development this scale, there's got to be some allowance for adjustment in terms of a little bit of, as Mr. Lentz called it, wiggle room, but certainly if their intention is to build a building where they've indicated they intend to build a building, I think Mr. Lentz and his neighbors would be satisfied with that largely. But again, just would like some more certainty. So as much certainty as can be provided within reason, I think, is not, not an unreasonable ask from Mr. Lentz and the King's Drive folks. So again, just appreciate everybody continuing to work on all this and would encourage John to continue that engagement with the DCA and with those neighbors, because I think that we're not quite there, but I don't think we're that far. So I hope that we can make more progress on the concerns that you guys heard from the different factions around this site tonight.
We're happy to do that. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Watlington?
I just wanted to lift back up the question about the height, but I think Councilmember Eggleston already spoke to it, so I just would like to, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Ms., Ms. Esmera?
Here, Madam Mayor. Question for petitioner. Mr. Carmichael, what changes have been made as a result of the request? I know you had made, you had mentioned there were several changes that were made. What changes were made?
To the, to the rezoning plan, Councilmember Esmera?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there've been, there've been a lot. You want me to go through each one?
You can just send us that in a follow-up email.
Okay. I'm happy to do that.
Okay, and I know you also mentioned that you are working on the noise mitigation plan.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, could you also include that in your follow-up email?
I'd be, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. In terms of the height and buffer, could you briefly summarize what is the request from the residents and what, what is the plan that suggests? What is the variance there?
I'm sorry, you broke up for a minute. You asked me what were they requesting, the neighbors?
But I'm trying to understand the variance in the height and the buffer between residents' requests and what is currently in the plan.
Okay, well, the, the plan currently allows, as Mr. Lentz said, 250 feet in a portion of Development Area D, which is located on the east side of the property, closest to, it's right by Little Sugar Creek, and it's closest to the King's Drive side of the site. The 200, I'm looking at a plan now, there, there are three height envelopes. There's a 40-foot height envelope closest to Little Sugar Creek. Granted, it's, it's probably about 30 feet in depth. And there's a 200-foot height envelope, and then it bumps up to, there's a 250-foot height envelope. The 250-foot height envelope is about 154 feet from the creek, and according to this plan, it's about 221 feet from the back of one of the lots across, on King's Drive, across Little Sugar Creek from the site. Mr. Lentz is asking that the building be pushed back further to the west, and we are looking at that as we speak. He also would like the building to go down from 250 to 200. I will say that that's, that's more difficult ask, but we, we will look at what we can do in terms of increasing that separation, and we will follow up with Mr. Lentz and follow up with planning and council.
Thank you, Mr. Carmichael. I look forward to your follow-up email with the details. In terms of the height and other requests, it looks like there have been progress that have been made, and I hope that before it comes for an approval, there should, I'm hoping that there would be a negotiation that would address the concerns that have been raised by residents so that we can, we can get their approval as well. Thank you, Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Dr. Joy, I wanted to mention I've been a patient at that facility and was very impressed with the quality of care and the dedication of your staff, so thank you for that. I, I do have a couple of questions about the rezoning. For one, do you happen to have on hand the frequency of helicopter operations currently at that campus and what you would expect them to be once this full development has taken place?
Bennett Thompson, can you answer that question?
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We have to unmute him. Is this Mr. Thompson?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. We've had that question a couple of times in some of our public hearings, or public meetings, rather, and we can produce that information for you, Councilman Driggs, about the specific numbers. I don't have them off the top of my head, but a lot of times, it's, it can be, you know, fairly unpredictable, just pending that it, you know, it's, it's accidents that happen and different reasons that people come in, but we'll be happy to pull that information together and share that with you.
I appreciate that, and my other question was, I was looking at the traffic analysis. That is a fairly major increase in trips from 5,000 to 13,000. So I think what I would request is that perhaps you just let me see the analysis that was done, all those intersections that was referred to, and whether any of them got sort of downgraded on the letter scale in terms of their passibility as a result of your analysis, or whether the improvements that you're proposing to make at those locations actually mitigate, you know, mitigate the traffic impact? And I think that's a question for follow-up. So if you could get that to me, I'd appreciate it.
All right.
We can do that, Councilmember Driggs.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you. This question is also about the helipad. What is the significance in this helipad compared to the current one? I, I'm sure that Atrium has one as a Thomas Center, I imagine. So how, what's the distance between the proposed helicopter pad or the helipad and the current one?
Ryan Lewis, can you answer that question?
Mr. Lewis?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can give an approximate at the moment.
Okay.
One second. Yeah, I would say that it's, it's basically moving about due south, roughly probably 400 feet in one location, and then the second one would be roughly maybe 700 feet south, so.
You can certainly, Mr. Lewis, you can certainly send that to us and, for the written up report, if you could just, if, instead of approximately, if you would do that, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, and for clarity, there's a number of, there's a number of heli stops that exist with the existing hospital today, so we can provide a better graphic that depicts the distances that, that each one proposed is located from that, those existing locations of travel.
So we're asking about ordinances, ordinances about regarding the noise and just different things about this helipad. Are there existing ordinances currently? Because it doesn't sound like that much of a change. I, I'm just trying to understand the significance to the neighborhood for this proposal.
Well, this is John Carmichael, Councilmember Johnson, and Ryan, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the difference is in moving further to the south, it does get closer to the residents on King's Drive because, and the residences on King's Drive are essentially southeast from the current helipads, and then the new ones would be more due west. Is that right, Ryan? So they're closer, Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, I mean, I would say that the, I mean, there's a helicopter route today that does come through campus and does head south over the area that we're in question for the new heli stop, so, you know, flight paths of the helicopters do occupy that space today. So as far as the noise consideration, I would say that what we're proposing should be somewhat equivalent to what is currently the state.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Johnson, do you have other questions?
No, thank you.
All right, Mr. Winston?
Yes, yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions. One, I wanted to thank the petitioner for figuring out how to realign Loop Road to Romney Road. I think that's something we talked about when we met. I have a question for one of the homeowners that spoke. If there is already a helipad at the hospital, why are you against a, a new helipad? How would that affect you differently?
Can, Mr., Mr. Winston, can you tell me, would that be Mr. Lentz? I believe he spoke about the helipad. Mr., Mr. Lentz? Can you come back online, please? Can we get, if, we're gonna get you back online so that Mr. Winston can address your, ask your, his question? We're checking to see if Mr. Lentz is still online, Mr. Winston.
Hello?
Mr. Lentz?
Yes, I'm off mute now, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Winston, for your question. It actually impacts us quite greatly. As they mentioned earlier. actually impacts us quite greatly. As they mentioned earlier, they're going to be moving the helipads in a direction that puts them almost directly closer to our house, although they said approximately 500 feet, that makes approximately 500 feet closer to our homes. However, the second factor is that currently, the helipad, there are two or three buildings that are taller than the current helipad that are between our home and the existing helipad. Under the new proposal, there will be no buildings in between our homes and the building that the helipad is landing on. Therefore, there will be a significant reduction in the noise buffering and sound buffering that occurs by those buildings just being in the way.
Thank you, thank you for that answer. I have a question also for staff. I clearly see the homeowner's concerns about the encroachment of areas E and F. I wonder, since this rezoning is split up into so many sections, if we broke those sections, hypothetically, if these sections were broken up into separate land use decisions, would the recommendations change? We have talked about the encroachment of zones into other zones and different land use decisions. I would like to get some, I would like to get some actual staff analysis on whether or not you would recommend the land use change for areas E and F if they were to stand alone outside of the greater rezoning.
So I'm looking to get back to our presentation, so I can have that up here in front of me. You had mentioned development areas E and F, Councilmember Winston, and certainly those development areas were two areas that came up early on in conversations with the community, and those areas were initially, I believe, shown to have some uses that were outside of just even the context of the current zoning, which part of it, I believe, is R-22 MF. So we, or part of it may have also been R-5. So we worked early on with the petitioner to try and get them to just line up the uses with the existing zoning. Those conversations continued even outside of, just at a staff level, with Atrium and the folks that live in that Fountain View and Garden Terrace area of the petition, and that's where the petitioner in Atrium came back and said, well, we'll put E and F really only devoted to open space and tree save, so essentially no development would be occurring in E and F. As it stood, when we, you know, had the initial zoning that was proposed, and they had other uses outside of just open space, the staff did have some general concerns. I'm not sure what that would have done in terms of our recommendation, because again, those concerns got addressed fairly quickly. It was really during the first round of revisions. So, you know, we felt that that was a good commitment to showing no development in E and F, just to kind of maintain some buffering between the residences and the hospital. So that's where we ended up with those two development areas being just open space and tree save. So I'm not sure if that fully answered your question, but again...
Yeah, I don't think it does. I think you might have added a condition. If somebody had come in and said they wanted to rezone that, those sections, E and F, to mud, but they would still only keep it tree safe, outside of no other, the other, outside of not having the rest of the land use decision at our doorstep, would that change the recommendation? You know, again, taken out of context of the whole rezoning.
So if somebody just came in and said they wanted to rezone E and F to something other than open space and tree save, is that the question?
Yeah, if they wanted to, they wanted to rezone that mud, because that was the homeowner's on Fountain View's concerns that we are encroaching on the neighborhood by moving from a residential kind of characteristic to this mud, this mud zoning. If this, my question is, if those sections were to stand alone outside of the larger land use decision we have at hand, would staff make the same recommendation?
Well, I mean, I think if we looked at those individually, we'd have to take a look at them individually. They were initially, like I said, proposed to do some higher density development. If those came in now, they're currently zoned. I think I'm looking at R-5, and they're recommended for uses that are fairly well consistent with single-family residential. So, you know, that'd be something we would have to evaluate if somebody came in standalone with those. And when we look at it in the larger context, if they were moving forward with a higher density of residential in that area, if it fit within the context of the project, it's something that we would consider based on if it was a mix of housing that was going to be suited for, you know, development for the hospital or workforce housing. Certainly, those are all things we would take a look at, but, you know, as it stands now, I'd really only be speaking in hypotheticals about it, just because we don't have a standalone.
Yeah, we can talk offline about it, or we can follow up with it. It's not something I'm definitely going to think and answer from the full room.
All right. Mr. Winston, anything else?
That, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So my question's a little bit like Mr. Winston's. I had a question on, actually on G. And, Mr. Carmichael, you had to zoom through that pretty quickly, I realize. So could you provide staff that can share with all of us, I think you said now G is 1, 2, 3, and 4?
Yes, ma'am.
Something like that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Could you share that with us as to what those changes are? Because I'm not even sure if some of the speakers knew about those changes, so it would help us to understand how those address some of the concerns. I have struggled with that area since we first looked at it, even since some of these changes have been made, so maybe that addresses some of the changes. But we don't have an area plan for this area, or at least one. I think the Dilworth plan was back in 1995. So I wish we could, you know, snap our fingers and have a comprehensive vision plan, but we don't. And so as we think about this area, A, I appreciate the need for growth for Atrium. I appreciate all the work that Atrium and the petitioner has done to try to meet the needs of, the various needs of the neighborhood. I do wish that we had a better process to be able to look at the whole plan and say, clearly, the Atrium campus is going to be a major part of Dilworth and of Dilworth's character for years to come, much like, you know, Mayo Clinic is in Rochester or Baptist Hospital in Nashville. And so as I think about that parcel of land, it would have been nice to see some kind of discussions with potential property developers, the residents, whatever, to have some kind of a discussion on what that could look like that not only fits into the plans for Atrium but for the neighborhood, so that it transitions nicely into something that does, it might not be the character of the neighborhood now, but it could be the character of where the neighborhood wants to go. So I do ask that you continue to have conversations with the DCA and with neighbors about what that could potentially be. I am uncomfortable with approving, if you were just to take that and rezone it and say, here's what it's not going to be, that wouldn't make any of us very comfortable. But you have taken some of the conditions out, so I appreciate that. But I still would like to know a little bit more about what development area G would be for Atrium in the future, and any conversations you've had to develop the properties that you do own as it transitions the neighborhoods. And then my second question has to do with the helicopter landing pads. How many are there right now?
Bennett or Ryan, can you answer that? Can y'all hear me?
Mr. Lewis?
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah.
They have to be unmuted, Mr. Carmichael.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we have three helipads today on the current hospital facility.
And so how many do you plan on having?
There would be two on the new facility, the new tower, and the three that are on the existing facility would continue to remain there. I think pediatric flights would continue to go in over closer to Levine Children's Hospital, and trauma flights would come in on the top of the new tower so that they would be able to quickly be transported down to operating rooms and intensive care areas.
Okay. So that seems to be a substantial increase, and of course, you can't time when those flights are going to happen, but I would like to know a little bit more about exactly where they're located. I know nothing about planning for helipads, but it is notable, Mr. Winston's comment about having a buffer because of the buildings on where the helipads are now, and having that be open. I do full disclosure, I live in Dilworth, so I hear those helicopters come overhead, and you always pray that whoever's on it is going to be okay. But whatever you can do to minimize that noise through construction, I think would be really helpful. And I would like to know exactly where those helipads are now and where they would be going.
Let me clarify just briefly that the pediatric on the existing would continue to operate, the other two would not operate. So we're not actually, we're not suggesting we have five, but still only three, two on the new tower and one that'd be used on the old tower.
Okay, so you, okay, so there still just would be three?
Correct.
Okay. That's helpful. Yeah, and just, and I'll have conversations offline, but I would just like to know a little bit about some of those development areas that are not being designated as open space, but, you know, what your future plans are for that area. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Carmichael, I'm going to add my question to the list. I really appreciate the development of the housing surrounding the area, but Ms. Gartner makes a great point as we talk about who's going to be working there, and, I'm sorry, we need to get some muting going on somewhere, but who's going to be working for the hospital and the opportunity. We are so very much interested in having affordable housing for people that are working, and would really, I would really like for you to take a look at the number of units, the apartments, as well as the quadruplexes and duplexes and triplexes that you're discussing, and to have a commitment to our overall goals of affordability, especially with the number of hospital employees that we have that are still at the 1350 an hour. I just really believe that as we are doing this zoning, the only way that's going to be possible for us to actually have people work and live in our city is that we use as many tools as we have to create affordability for people that are working every day. So I hope that you'll take a look at that and consider a commitment in the apartments as well as in some of the larger multifamily areas. So with that, I don't have any other speakers or any other questions, so I would like to ask for a motion.
Close the hearing.
We have a motion and a close. Second? I need a second?
Yes, second.
All right. So we have a roll call vote here. How about I start at the back, go opposite direction. Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Aye.
Mr. Newton?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington? Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston? Can all the other members say now, because we have six? All right, we all, the remaining group say aye, and then we have, the motion will pass.
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right. So, thank you very much. We will now go to item number 24, petition 2019-177 by Encore Real Estate for approximately seven acres on Prosperity and Old Ridge Road. It's in District 4. The current zoning is urban residential conditional and neighborhood services. The requested zoning is mixed-use development optional. The staff recommends approval upon a resolution of outstanding issues. So, Mr. Pateen?
Thank you. 2019-177 is in the Prosperity Village area, Old Ridge Road, Prosperity Church Road, Ridge Road. We did have a rezoning of a property right next door here. We'll talk a little bit about that as we go through this petition as well. This petition itself is currently zoned UR2 conditional, and they are proposing a mudo mixed-use optional zoning district for this project. The Prosperity Hucks Plan, which was adopted in 2015, does recommend residential office and retail for this site, and what we are looking at with this petition is a mix of 79 single-family attached townhomes. We've got about 15,000 square feet of commercial uses, one remote drive-through service for a financial institution or bank. We do have that unused residential units may be converted to some additional square footage, and some of that unused commercial square footage can also be converted to some residential units, so long as it doesn't exceed 100 additional units. So we do have some optional provisions about parking and maneuvering between the proposed building for the site and some of the, excuse me, from, the parking maneuvering area be screened from network required streets by low walls or landscaping, and we'll also do the same with the remote drive-through. We do have transportation improvements, the dedication of right-of-way, and also some architectural standards, which includes restrictions on building material, limitations on building heights, and modulations to the building facades to create a little bit more visual appeal. So this petition itself, as you can see, alley G or alleyway B here will tie into that property next door. So if we go back to the slide right before here, you can see we've got this large mixed-use area residential office and retail. So with this petition, as we said, we're looking at some single-family attached townhomes and commercial. The petition next door is more multifamily with apartments and some ground floor retail. So we do have a nice build out of a commercial mixed-use office retail residential area that was envisioned by the plan. So I feel that we are maintaining that consistency with the Prosperity Hucks Plan, and as the mayor mentioned, staff does recommend approval of this petition. It is consistent with the Prosperity Hucks Plan, and we do get that mix of residential office and retail in this area, and along with that petition that was approved last year next door. So again, we should have a nice mixed-use node at this intersection. So be happy to take any questions following presentations by the public.
All right. We have four people signed up to speak in favor of this petition, so the four people will have three minutes to speak. I have Will Russell, Mr. Russell, Mr. Colin Brown, Pat Duboris, and Eddie Moore. So I don't know if you are a group, but I'd like to go ahead and begin with Mr. Russell, three minutes. Mr. Russell? Mr. Brown, are you going to go through a presentation?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor Colin Brown, on behalf of the petitioner, the petitioner's on the call with me. Will Russell of the Prosperity Village Area Association did sign up. He signed up to speak in favor. I think there were a couple transportation comments that he wanted to make, so I don't want to step on his toes, but if Will is not here, I will go ahead and get started with our presentation. Good overview from Dave. Our petitioner is Encore Real Estate Investment. Pat Medrinos and Colin Hawkins are on the call. If you have...
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm not sure who's, who's on the call now?
That was Will Russell. I was on mute.
Oh, sorry. All right. So Mr. Brown was, had started off. Do you want to give him two minutes, and then you take the last, or how would, do you like Mr. Brown to finish, or would you like to go ahead? Your charge, Mr. Russell.
Yes, ma'am. Miss Mayor, Madam Mayor, I'd like to let Mr. Brown finish his speech.
All right, Mr. Brown, we'll go with you, and then we'll go follow up with Mr. Russell.
Madam Mayor, could you give me a time check, and I will start my timer and make sure I leave Mr. Russell?
You were at two, you've already spent 30 seconds, so we now are at 2 minutes, 2 minutes 30 seconds.
Okay, here we go. So I think Dave has done a good job with the overview of the property, so I'm going to advance through our slides here. One of the points Dave made, and our slides are not advancing as quickly as I'd like.
We'll give, we make allowances.
Just to the east of the property, Alliance Residential rezoned and is developing apartment community. And so what we're doing here is really filling out the last piece of the puzzle, this final quadrant. The property is currently zoned. UR had called for some mixed-use development. The plan that we're showing, the area plan, as you can see here, shows an area, and really called for a mixture of residential uses of this density as well as some commercial uses. So I think Encore's plan for for-sale townhomes and some limited commercial is really consistent with the area plan. If you can see on the image here, this is the approved Alliance rezoning next door, and then we've tried to connect these two. So you can see, when these projects are combined, as Dave mentioned, you've really got a quadrant here where we have the Chick-fil-A, is some retail on the corner. North of that, you can see on this slide now, you see... retail on the corner. North of that, if you can see on this slide now, you see this is where we're combining in the for-sale townhome uses, a little bit of commercial in the corner. In this image, to the east, you can see how this ties in with the multifamily, which I think, in the vision of the Prosperity Village area, was for this to be a mixed-use center, and now we have a sampling of four different uses coming together to really put together a more complete mixed-use development.
All right, you have 45 seconds left, Mr. Russell.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Russell.
Mr. Russell, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for hosting me this evening. As president of Prosperity Village Area Association, we do support this project for the reasons that Mr. Brown has stated. Mr. Brown, his staff, as well as Mr. Bedronas and Encore have been very forthcoming in accommodating and working with us to make sure that we get a high-quality project in the area, and we're excited about that. But we do want to call attention to one major issue that's going to affect this site, as well as the area as a whole, and that is the street network that is going to be a part of both of these rezonings that you see at the bottom of the page on Mr. Brown's map. Here essentially turned a road into a five-lane road. It's, right now, it's currently a two-lane road, and it will be widened by 80 feet to create a five-lane road with no stoplight, because it's too close to Ridge Road intersection. It will just be a flashing pedestrian beacon. And what we're going to have is 79 townhomes in this parcel with another 260 apartments at the border. And so what we're concerned about is that both residents who live in both of those areas will not be able to go across the street and support our local businesses.
Mr. Russell, I'm sorry, we're out of time. But I think I heard you clearly state that your concern is with that entrance and the widening of the road, traffic signalization. And can you send your comments to the city clerk at charlottensee.gov by midnight tomorrow, and we'll put the remainder of them on the record, and we'll get responses from the staff? Sorry that time just, it's very hard to do this when we're virtual, but we're trying to follow our zoning rules. So with that, I wanted to ask the council if they had any questions regarding the petition. Ms. Johnson, do you want to start off?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to say that, Mr. Russell, I've had some discussion with the, I believe it was with the previous petition, and this is an issue with the street network that the area association has been talking about for a while. I've met with CDOT, and I hope to meet with CDOT again, so we can try to get this resolved, because that is a safety concern for the neighborhood. There is an exit from the shopping center, and it's just a really tricky area. So we're hoping to work through this opposition. I mean, not opposition, but concern.
All right, thank you. Mr. Winston? Mr. Winston? Okay, that's okay, we've got that. Any other questions? Hearing none? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Sure.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Johnson, sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Watlington? Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Will everyone else please say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, so that hearing is closed, and we go to our next petition. Item 25, petition 2020-027 by the City of Charlotte in Crosland Southeast. This is location, we're all very familiar, with 78 acres of the former Eastland Mall site located near the intersection of Sharon Avenue and Central. It's in District Five. The current rezoning is Business One, S.C., Shopping Center Development, C.C., MUD-O, B1-CD. The proposed zoning is MUD-O, mixed-use development optional, with mixed residential innovation with five-year vested rights. We have, in this area, we have three speakers, four, and one again, so there'll be 10 minutes allowed for each side after the staff presentation. The speakers that we have in favor are Colin Brown, Mike Sullivan, Mimi Davis, and if you can coordinate your time by texting, that would be really helpful. And then we have Vincent Fresina, who would like to speak in opposition. And so we'll begin with the staff overview.
All right, Madam Mayor, 2020-027, as we mentioned, it's the former Eastland Mall site. This is about... 78 acres, and it is currently zoned. Let's see if we can get to this next slide here. Can I get control back of the... There we go. Currently, there's a mix of zoning districts out there. You've got B1, C.C., Commercial Center, MUD-O, B1-CD, and the proposed zoning is to unify all those different zoning districts into one MUD-O district, and then one MX2 innovative district. And we'll go through where those two districts would fall on this project here in just a few slides. The adopted future land use is from the Eastland Area Plan, which is from 2003, does recommend a mix of single-family, multifamily, office, and retail uses for most of the site. Overall, as you can see, we've got a couple different development areas for this project. You've got Development Areas One and Two, which would be where the MUD optional zoning districts would be placed, and then Development Area Three is on the backside of the site. That would be the MX2 Innovative District, and that would be where we would have our residential component for this project. Overall, we've got a pretty wide mix of uses with residential and then MUD, which would include commercial, office, hotel, athletic fields and buildings, operational buildings. We do have a transit facility and CATS operations out there, as well as some public parks. We do have some prohibitions within this conditional plan. Those are car washes, automobile service stations, and then also eating and drinking entertainment establishments with accessory drive-through windows beyond what is permissible, and the optional provisions would be prohibited. You know, again, those would be optional provisions also for signage, innovative provisions for MX2 area, which includes some flexibility in their street cross-sections, so they can create a little bit more of a dense urban framework out there. And then we've got some design guidelines and planned architectural elements along Main Street, which is a focal zone in Development Area One, which would be reminiscent of an urban Main Street. And then we have pedestrian connections to plazas, parks, and other focal points within the project. There's also a dedication of two acres for a public park, which would be subject to park and rec funding. There was also a traffic impact analysis that's being worked on for this project. It will study 18 different intersections and look at both the external network in red. You can see those intersections are identified with the numbering out there, and they range all the way from Albemarle Road up to Willora Lake Road and out to Farm Pond Lane. And then we're also looking at how those impacts would interact with the existing street network and the proposed street network, which is in blue. So again, those are some of the traffic study elements that we'll be looking at as a part of not just this petition, but also as part of the process that would kind of be concurrent with this, which would be some of the commitments with the development agreement between the different partners involved in the project. Overall, staff does recommend approval of this petition upon some resolutions, some outstanding issues which are related to transportation, environment, some site and building design. It is consistent with the Eastern Area Plan's vision for the area, which is a mix of single-family, multifamily uses, as well as office and retail. This plan does have all of those elements involved, and again, staff does recommend approval of the petition, and we'll be happy to answer questions following presentations from the public.
All right, Mr. Colin Brown, Mr. Mike Sullivan, and Ms. Mimi Davis, our speakers in that order for the petition. Mr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor Colin Brown, on behalf of the petitioners for the Eastland Mall site, our presentation could come up. We'll get started on that. Dave provided a good overview. I think everyone's familiar with the Eastland Mall site. Joining our team today, the petitioners in this rezoning petition are the City of Charlotte in Crosland Southeast. Tim Sidima from Crosland is on the call and available to answer questions.
Sir, if you could just, if you could just give us a minute to load your slides, because it takes just a few minutes for us to do the switch.
Sure, so I'll hold till our slides are up.
Mr. Brown, we have your deck up now.
I see them, thank you.
Okay, great.
As I mentioned, the petitioners in the rezoning petition are the City of Charlotte in Crosland Southeast. Tim Sidima from Crosland Southeast is on the call and can answer questions. Before we dive into the rezoning, and Dave did a really good job on the overview, I just wanted to remind everyone that the rezoning is just one piece of the Eastland Mall puzzle. This is a multifaceted project that will have a lot of other public steps in the process. I've gotten feedback from some members of council and some members of the community about other questions, questions about MLS here, questions about public funding for the development, questions about the open-air market and the skate park. And so I just wanted to reiterate from everyone tonight, this is just a hearing on the rezoning, and the purpose of the rezoning is to create an entitlement framework to allow a broader redevelopment, redevelopment of the Eastland Mall project. If council decides to approve this rezoning, nothing in the proposed rezoning would prohibit a skate park or an open-air market, nor would it commit any funds, nor would it ensure that a MLS event facility can come to this location. So just want to remind everyone, this is just the rezoning process, and we're really trying to set out the entitlement framework. So the Crosland Southeast team and the City of Charlotte have spent many months of outreach with the community to come up with a vision for what could happen at Eastland Mall. What you see on the screen now is an illustration of that vision. One of the concepts was to have a true mixed-use community that would include all types of residential uses, commercial uses like retail and office, active open spaces, connecting this all with green space and a robust street and pedestrian network. And one of the real ideas was to have an activator for the site that could be something like sports. And so this was the vision long ago, before we started having any more conversations about MLS. So the idea that we're working on here is how do we create a rezoning document to allow this type of development to occur? And this is a look at the property. We have a large portion of the property owned by the City of Charlotte, a smaller portion owned by Willora Lake Partners. There have been a lot of questions. The movement school on the western side of the site will remain, and there will be no changes to the CMS school site. But this partnership between the City of Charlotte and Crosland unites 78 acres and has almost all of the Central Avenue frontage brought to the table. The existing zoning, this is what I wanted to talk about, is we talked about visions for the site. Some of this zoning has been in place since the 1970s. The bulk of the site is a B1-SCD, which is the B1 Shopping Center District. And so I wanted to remind everybody, the current zoning on the property, this is a look at it. This was a 70s, 80 era mall. If you can see, this is, this is the current zoning on the site, is to have a large mall with up to 1.1 million square feet of retail and a large surface parking. So I think, you know, folks are concerned about what is becoming. What we need to do is, this is antiquated, useful for no one, and so what we really need to do is remove this antiquated regional mall rezoning and create a framework to allow that vision that I showed you earlier. The city has, and many stakeholders have been working on this process, frankly, for years. One of the first steps in the process was the Eastland Area Plan. You see that on the screen now, and that calls for a mix of uses on the site, single-family, multifamily, retail, and office. And so this rezoning plan is consistent with that. The rezoning plan, this is in front of you now, we've broken it up into three development areas. And I do want to point out, as Dave mentioned, we're using two different zoning districts. We're using the MUD district, a mixed-use development district with options, which you see that a lot. So the two development areas fronting on Central Avenue will have that MUD zoning to accommodate a variety of commercial uses. The easternmost portion we see being a more traditional mixed-use development, sorry, the westernmost portion, the easternmost portion is where we had those active uses and the idea is that that could accommodate a sports complex. So one of the reasons we've broken that development area out is in the area to the west, we've asked for some optional provisions like enhanced lighting, enhanced signage, so that we could accommodate something like that, should it come to fruition. On the northern parcel, closer to the Willora Lake neighborhood, I wanted to point out, we're using the MX2 Innovative District there. In that area, that is a more residential zoning district, and we've committed that only residential uses would be allowed in that area. We've got some innovative provisions in that area to plan for a more contemporary street network, to have more of a neo-traditional mix of streets, to have a more comfortable feel. So the MUD optional requests that we're looking for are for some innovative signage, some lighting that could be associated with a sports entertainment complex. We've got some flexibility on parking and maneuvering, and we have some flexibility for drive-through uses. Now, unlike the old zoning in the area, which frankly allows drive-throughs, much like you'd see up the Central Avenue corridor, the MUD zoning is very restrictive on that. We're asking for permission to use three, and as Dave mentioned, only one of those would be for a restaurant. And in the MX2 district, our innovative requests are for our street networks and some sidewalks to bring the homes a little bit closer to the street and feel more comfortable. Additionally, commitments that we've made since their more recent filing, we've got a focal point for Main Street with heightened design standards, commitment to a two-acre public park, commitment to a multi-use path that connects the entire development up with the CMS facility, and then we've capped maximum residential uses on the site at 1,050 units. I've said a lot, and we have two speakers that want to speak in support, so at this time, I'll turn it over to Mike Sullivan and Mimi Davis for their comments, and we're here for questions.
Mr. Sullivan and Ms. Davis, you have approximately 3 minutes and 15 seconds. Who's going first? Mr. Sullivan?
Mr. Sullivan was having difficulty getting in, and so we're trying to get him in right now.
Is Ms. Davis ready?
Ms. Davis, are you on?
I'm muted. Oh, there we go. Can you hear me?
Yes. Mr. Sullivan, we're going to try to get him on. We've got 3 minutes and 15 seconds remaining, so if you could, we'll give you, do you think you'd need a minute and a half or so?
I can talk really fast.
I appreciate that, Ms. Davis. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted you to say that I've lived here since 2005, moved from Oklahoma, and so we got in on the kind of the last part of the heyday of Eastland Mall. By the time we had been here a while, it was beginning to deteriorate, and then it closed in 2010. We understand that a lot of great apartments were built, people wanted to live here, but then when it closed, it was quite a blow to East Charlotte. That was a decade ago, and there's been increasing discontent among the residents and among the neighborhoods, feeling that there hasn't been enough effort in supporting our needs in this part of town. We've had challenged schools, large low-income apartment complexes, lack of retail, lack of job opportunities, and it seems like we were given one more thing with this closure that we just had to overcome. The current proposal offers a partial solution to this. Many were angry with the city, but now we have a chance to move forward. We're asking that you please consider voting to support the Crosland proposal, and we speak for our 30 neighborhoods and the ECON Board, the Charlotte Coalition.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Sullivan? Given your, Mr. Sullivan's expertise as a former planning commission, I'm sure we want to hear from him, and we've got some time left. So we're trying to call, get you to call in.
I did just get a text note, which may be from Mr. Sullivan, to say that he was not able to connect, but would be sending a written letter.
Thank you. So, Mr. Brown, you have two minutes left, and I just didn't know if you wanted to use those, or if we should go to Mr. Fresina.
Let's go ahead and go to Mr. Fresina.
And we'll give you those two minutes on rebuttal. Mr. Fresina, would you, are you able to call in? Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I certainly can. It's good to hear from you always. So you have 10 minutes. I hope that you don't have to use them all.
Well, I hope so too. So let's go ahead and start. My name is Vincent Fresina. Well, I hope so too. So let's go ahead and start. My name is Vincent Frasina. I've lived here since 1979. Let's take a look at what the newspaper says, that there seems to be a lack of transparency. In addition, some neighbors and affordable housing advocates have called for a temporary stop for the rezoning until an in-person meeting can be given for the amount of public, the public funds and for the land, public money involved. I am on that side. Couple of weeks ago, or excuse me, a month ago, I tried to get in touch with the rezoning staff. All I was told when I called, I was zoning chair for my neighborhood for many years. I know the number, 3362205 by heart, and could not get in touch with anyone in the rezoning staff. Instead, they kept saying, well, you're going to have to talk to Todd DeLong. I finally had to find out and talk to people, Ike, and I thank him for all his service, Kent Maine, to try to find out who was in charge of this particular rezoning. So I had problems with that. I live in Windsor Park. The neighborhood has gone up, left and right. So the question is, as you're telling people, like Mr. Driggs did, last summer, at some point, he said that this land was barely able to be given away. My question is, how much is it currently worth, especially since the article says you paid $13 point million? To give you an idea, on Acorn Street, there were two properties on a corner that were worth $200,000. They cut the backyard to put another one by right, and that has property values for three houses that have sold for a total of $1 million. On Terrywood across the street from that, they took one house, bulldozed it. The land cost was approximately $90,000 per house. Those houses are going to yield about a million dollars in prop, not property tax, property value. Across the street from that, on North Sharon Amity, this is a piece of property that the City of Charlotte has tried to buy from the individuals. What I don't think they know at the time is that it was a past president of Windsor Park who I had nominated years ago. And in their late 80s, the city, when they asked, when these individuals asked, excuse me, but how much, what are you going to use it for? They said, you know what? We don't really have to tell you by law. Then they called, the city called back and said, well, it says we can get it to you tax-free. And I'm not sure whether they meant from the bulldozing of the houses, whether they were trying to get it from condemnation or so forth. But these are the clauses. If one doesn't work, another one doesn't. And that's how the city wants to purchase these. People have told me that Pat Mumford once said, go ahead and let the land increase some. In the Eastland area, Susan Lindsay, before she died, I spent some time with her talking about Eastland. She knew that the land was going to increase. I'd like to talk a little bit more about the request for proposal during this time period. And I listened to Ms. Mayfield actually there saying, excuse me, says, we're going to go ahead, or we will not be able to probably get a minority contractor to buy this. Yet, when it came out, they had a perfect or compliment, which they're now calling an activator, which makes me question on land use, was everybody given a fair shot to be an activator? And what requirements that city staff used if only one person, if four people applied, and then they started to break it apart? How did that happen? And were minorities given a chance? One of the reasons I voted for the fields was anything that gave less of an imprint for housing, which the city did not want to say, we should have voted for because it was less housing to be placed on that property. I had no problem 10 or 15 years ago asking the City of Charlotte to limit housing in our areas. I've written articles that have gotten in the Charlotte Post to the front page from various neighborhood groups where we've gotten blurbs and said, you know, why you just keep dumping it on us? And that's been a problem. So when we don't know, we tend to make bad decisions. And I believe this could be one of them, when you don't feel a fuck with the housing issue, so everyone knows where they stand. I personally believe that everyone should have an idea of what, it's a responsibility for all, not just the low-income neighborhood. I attended one of the conferences with Mr. Shatima, and this was at a little cafe. And I asked him, I said, how much money is it going to take for you guys to get on board? This was before Tepper. And he said, well, it'll be in the tens of millions. Now, in the paper, he says, it's $110 million, but there's no idea where the money is going to go for, what's the split? Which leads me to believe that we will be asking to vote for this petition, but at the same time, we will not know what's coming to our area, especially which we do not have at this point. It's just, just out of curiosity, how much time do I have left?
4 minutes?
Hello?
4 minutes, Mr. Frasina. 4 minutes?
I appreciate it. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so one of the things that just happened out of, out of the blue is I knew somebody who was a retired reporter and researcher, good friend of mine. I've known him for about 40 years. And we started talking last year. And he started to go over the increase, and I've given you some examples, of all the prices in here as far as the, all the property value. So the question is, did the city, what did the city do to use places like ULI, and I'm not sure if I got the abbreviations, or a request for a proposal, or to see what the potential would for us to be? Because all I've heard of in so many different places is about, is about that the area is not doing great. We are doing great. I want to see it cross over North Sharon Amity. During this time period, as I told you, I was the one who started the housing locational, what became the housing locational ordinance, the building, boarded up homes, even though staff had known about that. I went to one of the meetings where I came in with materials. I stood up and told Tracy Dawson, I said, you know, it's not fair for you to try to push this thing through in 2 to 3 weeks. That's what Mr. Matt Newton said. And I said, you really need to go ahead and have a full 30 days. Now, going to what the newspaper said, I believe we truly need a, to have a meeting where I and others can talk, because when I did that and actually talked to people, they agreed with me, 80, 70, 80%, it's on tape, saying, let's go ahead and look at some of these items. And this is not happening. And the question is, forgetting about me personally, do you take a look at what was in the paper where people feel that there should be some sort of temporary stop at this point of, not only because of that, but because of the COVID, of what's going on, is what are the chances of this actually going to be built? And how is this going? But also, from the standpoint of with Tepper Sports, whether it's built or not, he built something in Rock Hill. He's also gone ahead and is eyeing other property for the stadium. I understand that. That's what he's done. He's building his wealth. The question is, are we looking to the forward, forward to the future, like he is fulfilling the stadiums down the road? Have we gone ahead and actually looked and said, okay, this is what the newspaper said. I've laid out some things. Can we go ahead and look at ways, when phase 2 of opening up would be, and have a community meeting? That's all I'm asking for. So if I were to play, and this is the only part I'll have a little bit of fun, besides thanking Kent Maine for his years of service, because I've dealt with him over the past 20 years on and off, is to play mayor for a moment to say, is this package so fragile that it can't wait? Or do you have information, which we'd hope you would have at this point, on when you could do a meeting at a large facility, whether it be the school, or even the stadium, or someplace, to have it as suggested in the paper? I would not even be speaking tonight had I known that I see other people who agreed with me what I was thinking of, and that it was in the newspaper. That's where I'm using my source to speak for those who are, cannot, and in addition, just want to see an even playing field on this quarter of a billion dollar project that I believe Mr. Driggs said in the paper about a year or so ago, where only really may get one chance to really get it right. And the rezoning and starting the...
Mr. Frasina, that's your 10 minutes. Thank you for your comments. And we're going to ask Mr. Sullivan to use the last 2 minutes of the, for the people that's spoken for the petition. Technical difficulties, allow us for a little allowance here, because he had signed up in advance to speak. So he'll have 2 minutes to speak. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, Mayor.
Good to hear from you, Mike.
You as well. Thank you. And I appreciate all that you and the city council are doing through these very difficult times. And I thank you for allowing me to come and speak with you in favor of moving this project forward. Myself, on behalf of myself, my co-chair, Pat C. Kinsey, and all of Charlotte East, thank you. I think that it's, it's important to note that our organization basically came into existence because of the concerns around Eastland Mall. And this goes all the way back to the Lee Institute. If anyone has been around that long, roughly about going on 20 years, when individuals began to work together to look at solutions for Eastland. One of the things we wanted to do, and we have, I still work very closely toward that, is not just to save the mall initially, but later on to develop something there when the mall had passed on, and to build something that would be unique, not only for East Charlotte, but for all of our city. And I think that that is what we have here. Through a number of meetings, through a number of, my goodness, it seems like I've been to about 25 meetings over the last 2 years, but it goes back even further than that. And we had a lot of different projects moving forward, looked very promising. They never quite made it this far. And I don't, I think a lot of it was because it wasn't quite the right fit. We feel very comfortable with this plan that Prawls and Southeast is moving forward with. I'd sent a letter to you all that was from us over the weekend. I appreciate the responses that individuals got. But one thing that I noticed when our meeting was held on Thursday to discuss issues that individuals had brought up regarding slowing this process down, was the term patient anticipation. And that is something that I think it is hard to put a value on. It's hard to say that's it. But if you have been working this project as long as we have, that is the term. We have been patiently anticipating this. And to, at the last moment, because of all the issues that we are having to address now, to slow this process down, I do not think it's prudent. And I would ask you to continue to move forward with it. Thank you all for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Brown, you have 2 minutes in rebuttal.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I don't know, in my experience in this city, if I've seen a development project that has taken longer to come to fruition on this. So it's a real challenge to imagine slowing it down now, that we had some real excitement and some momentum about the project. Our team is equally as frustrated that we cannot meet with people in person. But I do feel like the outreach that has taken place on that has allowed even greater engagement. If we were doing traditional meetings, we were scheduled to do a traditional community meeting for this rezoning petition on March 12th. We had a space that would hold 250 people. We were unable to execute that meeting due to the COVID circumstances, but have done more of these online outreach. And we believe that conservatively, based on the feedback we're getting, we have at least 700 unique engagements that have taken place. The way that we've rolled these out online, people are able to watch them at their convenience. They're not having to get a babysitter and come out and see us on a Tuesday night. So we feel like there's been robust engagement in the process. And as I mentioned at the outset, this is just one piece of the puzzle. Mr. Frasina mentioned a number of his concerns, but I just wanted to remind him and the rest of council that those concerns are not being decided as part of this rezoning petition. We are taking a vital step in moving Eastland Mall forward, and this rezoning sets up that framework. The city continues to own this property. Other agreements and approvals will be necessary to execute on that. So I don't want anyone to think that this hearing, or hopefully a vote next month, is the end and answers all those questions, because it does not. We are creating a framework for you to make some more important decisions as we move forward. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We'll now open it up for questions from the council, as for any of our speakers. And the first person that I have is Mr. Winston, followed by Ms. Johnson.
Okay. I guess I just keep leaving my hand up, but I do have questions. I didn't open it up yet. So I disagree with one thing that Mr. Brown said. While it is correct that land use decisions will set up future steps, the conditional rezoning process is where the city council members get to work with developers to advocate on behalf of our constituents. In this case, the city council is also the petitioner, and so we have incredible leverage on this project. With that said, staff has stated that the public park is contingent on county funding. I believe that we should make that commitment to that park regardless of county action. I would ask staff why we are not doing that.
Mr. Johnson, I'm not sure that, I mean, Mr. Winston, I'm not sure that staff can address a policy question, because generally, parks and recreation were a part of the trade-off that we did with a number of agreements with this county. Those may change, but I think those are council, council-approved policies, once we entered into an interlocal agreement to move park and recreation to, for both operations and development. The rationale being that...
I understand, I understand in the overall policy of maintaining parks, but when we deal with rezonings, we make petitioners, or part of, part of that, those negotiations can be that developers and petitioners commit to open space and certain amenities. And we are a petitioner here. Why are we not committing to that public park?
I'm not. I don't know the answer to that. I think that's an answer for your, the council to, I was going to say your colleagues and myself to address. So I think that's a question that we have to raise in a forum where the elected officials can have a discussion around it. And that's certainly something that can be done. All I know is we have an existing agreement that the staff would be following on that area right now. So...
I don't think, I agree that we should talk about it, because I think what you're referring to is the apples-to-oranges conversation. We're talking about a rezoning and the commitment that a petitioner is going to make to the community. So I think we should make that commitment regardless of what other policy arrangements have to be met to fulfill that. But I think we should make that commitment germane to a land use decision.
Well, we're going to have some workshops and some money discussions later on. And I think that you're perfectly willing, I agree with you, there, it's just, what I was trying to point out is, they are working with what exists. What you're asking is something that's different. And a part of a rezoning petition is just, right now, we need to figure out a way for that discussion to be held among your colleagues. So do you have other questions?
Yes, I have, I have one more question or statement. The City of Charlotte has made commitments to fight displacement caused by development. On the Eastland site, the community has responded to community needs by developing park space in the form of a skate park. They also have incubated small businesses in the open air market. If we are going to be true to those ideals that we profess to the rest of our constituents in Charlotte, I think we need to abide by those too. And we need to make a commitment in this rezoning that we will not displace that skate park in that open air market, even if it is a situation where we are going to commit to a place off-site, close by, to make that happen. The neighbors have said that this is needed, and they've gone so far to move dirt, sweat and blood to make that happen, and we should honor that.
Okay, thank you. The next person I have is Ms. Johnson. Okay, I'm sorry. I got, I saw that you put your hand down, so that's, we're good. I got, I saw that you put your hand down, so that's, we're good. Ms. Ashmira?
Can you hear me?
Not really.
Can you hear me?
Just barely.
How about now?
That's not any better, that's worse. And that's even worse.
Okay, can you come back to me, let me get my headphones.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Eggleston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just, to underscore the point, I think Mr. Francino is making some valid points on the things that are going to need to be discussed and weighed as this process continues down the tracks, but it has been, I think, painstakingly slow in the view of many of the folks who live in East Charlotte, who have longed for something that's a sign of progress on this site, and I'm glad to see that we are finally moving the ball forward. And a lot of those conversations about what David Tepper might or might not do, or how we might or might not be involved in that, and things of that nature, there will undoubtedly be a time for those. I don't think that time is now, as Mr. Brown pointed out, zoning on this site being for a large regional mall is something that's never going to be built on that site again. So this is improving the land use opportunities that exist there to create something that will be a benefit to the community, and so I am glad we're having a hearing tonight. I do hope that we don't seek to delay this. Conversations around many of the issues that folks have voiced interesting concern about will come as part of different conversations, so, and while I am excited about the park, I would be hesitant for us to dive into that space that is squarely in the county's wheelhouse, because I think it sets a precedent where people say, well, how come you did it here, how come the city's not doing it on the proposal that we're, you know, in our community? And does it open up a can of worms? Why doesn't the city pay for schools? I think that there is a division of responsibilities for a reason, and certainly I think it will create a situation where the county will be far more able to execute a park at the Eastland site if it's with land that's coming to them at no cost, and it sounds like that's the situation here. So I think the city certainly should be a partner in that, and I think the partnership there is, it's city-owned land, and it's going to be donated for a park, and this current county commission has demonstrated a much stronger commitment to parks, and so I think that they would find a way to make that work, and that we should let them. But certainly appreciate all the work on this, and glad to see it moving forward for the benefit of all of East Charlotte.
Thank you. Ms. Ashmira?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me now?
Yes, that's much better, thank you.
Uh huh, okay. So finally, this has come a long way, as we have heard from residents who have lived in this area for decades. They have been waiting for us to get to this step and even further, and this is the first time we have come this far, and I do not want us to now delay it. I understand the concerns that were raised by Mr. Winston around what will development look like for the site, and as Mr. Brown had earlier stated, rezoning does not preclude us from having those conversations around what is going to be the vision for the site and the specifics. With that being said, I'm in full support of this, us moving forward, and also I have a question for our staff, just to confirm. So would we be, so I know in this rezoning process, would we have to, in any way, make changes to rezoning for the open space or a park? Or would this rezoning allow us to have a park or open space?
Does the rezoning allow for open space?
Yeah, the rezoning would allow us to have one. It does, you know, have that language in there, that it would be developed subject to funding by Mecklenburg County, but there is a set aside of two acres for a public park location that would be determined during permitting, and they also are committing to a multi-use path that'll connect to the existing schools facility that CMS operates, so that's also part of the open space plan, but they will have that two-acre dedication that's in the notes, and that would be part of the rezoning plan.
Thank you. So again, as our staff mentioned, this does not preclude us or in any way suggest that we are not committed to our open space or park. That discussion will continue, but I do not want us to have that discussion at the cost of delaying this process. Residents have been waiting, as I mentioned earlier, for a long time to bring catalysts for this part of our city, because there are so many residents that are having to go outside of the district to find a job. So if we can bring opportunities in part of our city that will not increase our tax base, but also bring economic opportunities in every part of our city, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The, this tonight sets the land use rules, but does that, so a little bit on what Council Member Ashmira is saying, does it prevent us at some point of saying, actually, we'd like a little bit more than two acres for a public park, or we'd like to widen the multi-use path? Does that prevent us from having those discussions going forward?
It does, it does not. Because Ty answered you, but he muted his mic, so I was just repeating what he said.
Okay, and the reason I say that is because I think that, you know, what we're going through right now in this pandemic, and we, and I really am excited about what staff has done with our shared streets concept, we really do see the need for open space in our community, people are craving it, and so I hope that as we come out of all of this, we'll look at our rezonings and our developments and say, you know what, really, what really does increase the value of an area are things like open space and bike paths and multi-use paths, and as I look at some of ours right now that are four feet wide, I hope that, you know, we're not going to make that mistake again. So I just, my question was just to make sure we haven't limited ourselves for any kind of new planning that might be sort of the silver lining in this pandemic when it comes to land use and the new urban centers that we develop, so, thank you, that answers my question.
I also wanted to address the idea that whenever we're doing any kind of public funding in projects, we're certainly going to be holding a number of citizen engagements. It may be a little bit different as we go forward, we don't know, but I think that one of the lessons we've learned, it's better to always talk about even the things that are difficult to do, so that everybody has a complete understanding, so I have appreciation for people coming in and saying, well, I just need to know, and I would say to Mr. Francia, I don't know that I could believe everything they write about me in the paper, but you're probably right, they're probably good writers on this one, so, we'll go ahead. I'm going to call on Mr. Newton, the district representative, as our final speaker on this, for this hearing. I believe to be the final speaker on this hearing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pending any further questions, I will move to have this hearing closed.
All right, we've got a motion to close the public hearing, all in favor, I'm sorry, any, I need a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, so we'll have a vote, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell is a yes vote, Mr. Winston?
B.
All right, Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
So the balance of you, if you would just say yes, we have six votes to approve that, so thank you. All right, so.
All right.
I'm trying, I'm trying. Tari is like, maybe this is okay, so, all right, so the next petition that we have is petition 2020-03 by Fairview Builders for approximately three tenths of an acre on the southern intersection of Siegel and Van Everry in Belmont, District 1. The current zoning is heavy industrial, the requested zoning is urban residential conditional. We have one speaker for, so we'll have the staff give us overview, and then Mr. Brown will speak, we'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, 2020-003, about 10 acres.
What number are we on?
I'm sorry, did I, did I miss something? No, we're on 26, item 26.
You're to the right spot, Mayor.
I thought so, but, you know, never know, you need to check sometimes. All right, go ahead, Mr. Petain.
All right, thank you. Located here in the Belmont neighborhood at Van Everie Street and Siegel Avenue, the petition is proposing a UR2CD rezoning, it's currently zoned industrial. This is a petition that is looking to do some urban infill. The Belmont Area Revitalization Plan from 2003 does recommend single-family uses at up to five dwelling units per acre. This petition itself is proposing for six total residential units, because of the size of the lot, we're looking at a density of 20 DUA, but again, just six total units. It does propose rear-loaded access to the units by way of Cotton Mill Lane, commits to some architectural standards, including some residential connections to the sidewalk, along with raised average sidewalk grade from 12 inches to 24 inches. Also provides each unit with a stoop porch facing each public right-of-way to kind of provide a little bit more of a pedestrian framework to these units, and also recesses garage doors visible from the public right-of-way. Staff does recommend approval of this petition, we do have a few outstanding issues that we're looking to work through between now and decision. It is inconsistent with the DUA for the Belmont Revitalization Plan, but it is consistent with the overall use in terms of single-family residential. We do, again, recommend approval, and we'll be happy to take any questions following the presentation from the petitioner.
All right, Mr. Brown, you have three minutes to review your request for the rezoning petition. Colin Brown?
Yep.
Here we are, thank you.
We have your deck up, too.
Great. Can be very brief on this one, Dave did a really good job on the overview. I'll point out one thing that's neat about this, these are three existing lots, and so here's our site in green with a star on it, three existing lots. What the petitioner plans to do is leave those lots as they are, and essentially build a duplex on each of the lots, which kind of maintains the rhythm and the feel of that street. As you can see, on three sides, it's surrounded by a newer townhome development, so we think the duplex is here, are really a nice fit for the area, happy to have staff support. We had, we were, this was the last in-person community meeting, we were able to have had good attendance there, and we have attended a virtual community meeting for the Belmont Neighborhood Association. I think they like the concept, what the development team has done, they have asked us to consider some additional architectural features, we will have an ongoing conversation with them, and I think bring some of that back in our revised plan. Here, if you have any questions.
All right, council, any questions? Is there anyone that has a question? Mr. Eggleston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown, appreciate the presentation and your continued dialogue with the Belmont Community Association. Motion to close the hearing.
All right, I have a second? Second, second, thank you. Mr. Driggs, a motion to close?
Right on.
Mr. Bakari? Mr. Newton? Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mr. Graham? Mr. Eggleston? I'm trying to get the six.
People went out to get dinner, it sounds like, yes.
I know, I'm trying to get six, so, Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell's a yes, Ms. Ashmira? Mayor Protem?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Okay, then I think we have six, thank you. All right, the hearing is closed, our next item is, agenda item number 27, petition 2020-010 by Christ the King Lutheran Church for approximately 15.8 acres located south of Tryon Street, west of Steelcreek Parkway. It's in District 3, the current zoning is single-family residential, the proposed zoning is institutional. Staff recommends approval of this petition. We have the staff overview, and we have Mr. Brown to speak for, so, Mr. Petain, and then Mr. Brown will follow.
Petting, 2020-010, is this down on South Tryon Street, just off Steel Creek Road just a bit? It is currently zoned R3, it does have an institutional use currently on it, so we just have an institutional use operating as an R3 use, which is allowed currently. They want to look forward to go and expand some of their operations of the church itself to allow a daycare facility. That is something that isn't permitted as part of that R3 zoning, even though it does allow the church, that component is not consistent with the current R3 zoning, so this petition is just a conventional petition requesting that institutional zoning district. It is consistent with the Steel Creek Area Plan from 2012, which recommends institutional land uses, so all things line up there, so with that, staff does recommend approval of this petition, again, it is conventional, so no outstanding issues, no site plan to consider, just happy to answer any questions on this one, we do have Mr. Brown that may have some comments from the petitioner's side, and we'll be happy to answer any questions following that, thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, Madam, on behalf of the petitioner, this is an existing church, Christ the King, in the area, that happened to be developed under R3 zoning. There's some different things we'd like to do on the site, including a cafe, and so we think rezoning to an institutional use makes perfect sense for a church, it is consistent with the land use plan, so I think very straightforward, happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, this is in District 3. Ms. Watlington, do you have any questions, or does any other council member?
No, I don't have any questions on this one.
All right, do you want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Boo.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I will go, Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
I'm asking for a vote on the motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
That's six, so everyone else say yes, thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, the next item that we have is item, agenda item 28, petition 2020-029 by JCO or Jack Hoak Acquisition for approximately one acre at the intersection of Distribution and Dunavant Streets, it's in District 3, the current zoning is transit-oriented, development mixed-use optional, the proposed zoning is transit-oriented, development, transit, neighborhood center. We have Mr. Brown to speak to this, and we'll follow the past pattern.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Petain?
Yes, 2029, just an acre at the intersection of Distribution-Dunavan off of Tryon. The petition itself is currently zoned TOD, it's a TODM optional, so it's one of our previously existing TOD districts that wasn't converted due to that optional provision being on the site. The petitioner in this case is looking to just rezone to one of our new conventional TOD districts, which is TODNC. It's a conventional plan and conventional request, so there's no conditions or site plan associated with it. It is consistent with the New Bern Transit Station area plan from 2008. Again, this would have likely been part of the realignment if it wasn't for the optional provisions, but staff does not have any concerns about the request to go to TODNC. Again, it is consistent, we do recommend approval, and we'll be happy to answer any questions following Mr. Brown's presentation.
Mr. Brown?
I think Mr. Petain has covered all the relevant facts, happy to take any questions if you have them.
All right, are there any questions? This is in District 3, Ms. Watlington, do you have any questions?
Nope, I am up to date on this one.
Okay, all right, I have a motion to close the public hearing, and a second, let's start off, Mr. Driggs, this is a motion to close the hearing.
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Johnson? All right, Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Indeed.
Okay, all of the rest can say yes, thank you very much, that was six.
Yeah, yes.
All right, so we're now on petition number 29 for approximately, it's petition 2019-170 by James Doyle for approximately, for a quarter of an acre located in the eastern intersection, at the east intersection of the Plaza and Shamrock Drive, it's in District 1, the current zoning is neighborhood businesses, and the proposed zoning is neighborhood services. Staff recommends approval of this, and we have the staff presentation, followed by the petitioners representing- And we have the staff presentation followed by the petitioner's representative, Mr. Anthony Fox. So we'll start off with the staff and then Mr. Fox.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. 2019-170 is located on the Plaza and Shamrock. It is currently zoned B1, as we had mentioned, and it's going to a neighborhood service district, which is a conditional district by nature. So there is a site plan and conditions to be considered with this petition. It is under the Central District Plan from 1993. It does recommend retail uses for the site. This proposal itself is a prohibit an auto-centric use, such as an accessory drive-through windows and gas stations that would not be compatible with the surrounding residential uses, as well as other residential uses in NS. Provide an eight-foot planting strip, six-foot sidewalk along the frontage, so we'll get some street frontage upgrades along the plaza there. And also committing to full cutoff-type lighting for both freestanding attached lighting fixtures. That's to help with some of the residential adjacency that's parked behind the site. The staff recommendation is for approval. We do have some outstanding issues related to site and building design that we'd like to continue to work through. It is consistent with the Central District Plan recommendation for retail uses at the site. And again, we'll be happy to take any questions following Mr. Fox's presentation.
Actually, I have to make myself, Mr. Fox is on the next petition, so.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Fox, he doesn't have to address this one, I guess, you know, he would have to send a bill and it probably wouldn't get paid. All right, so is there any question for the staff? We have no speakers signed up. No questions for the staff. Can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close, yes.
Of a second? Okay, so Ms. Isel, Mayor Protem? All right, Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell is a yes. Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
If the remainder of you will say yes, thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Was there a question for me there?
Yes, I just wanted to note, I didn't get my hand up quick enough, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's a lot of excitement, there's a lot of excitement in the community for the businesses coming to this site, so look forward to seeing a diner that any people in the city miss come back to life.
Okay, cool. Thank you. All right, Agenda Item Number 30, and this one, Mr. Fox does have an opportunity to speak for three minutes. So we'll have the staff review of Petition 2020-008 by RK Investments Charlotte LLC. This is for almost five acres on the west side of Reims Road. It's in District 2. The current zoning is single-family residential. The proposed zoning is urban-residential conditional. Staff recommends approval upon resolution of outstanding issues. Mr. Petain, if you will start off and then Mr. Fox.
Okay, yes, 2020-008, as we've mentioned, just under five acres on Reims Road. The current zoning is R3. They are looking to go to a UR2 conditional district. You can see there is some existing UR2, some R12 MFCD, R8 MFCD in this general area. UR2 is actually just adjacent to this piece as well. This petition is actually going to tie in with that petition. We'll get into that in just a moment. This is part of the Northlake Area Plan, which is in 2008. That plan does call for single-family residential at up to four dwelling units per acre. As you can see throughout this general area over time, we've seen a difference in some of the land uses there. We've gotten a little bit more density in this area than that plan had a division from 2008. But again, that seems to be, you know, something that we've seen on both sides of Reims Road and continuing with this petition. With this petition, we do have some interconnectivity with that piece just to the south of it, off of Proximity Drive, Napa Oak Drive. This project would tie into that existing multifamily project, so we'd get a consistent bit of land uses between the two. This proposal itself does allow up to 84 multifamily units. The maximum height is 47 feet of the buildings. We do have that existing access from Silvercrest Drive and Proximity Drive that would tie into that existing project just next door. Continue that eight-foot planting strip and six-foot sidewalk along Reims Road. We do have some existing driveway encroachments that we'll have to maintain on this property that's just on the backside. It's kind of just fallen off the slide here. But we will maintain some existing driveway encroachments for this property. Otherwise, we'd have some landlocked situations there. We do have architectural standards that are being committed to and that building renovations will not have blank walls greater than 20 feet. Also some amenity areas with pathways, seating areas, and some ornamental landscaping. Staff does recommend approval of this petition. We do have some outstanding issues to work through. It is inconsistent, as we've mentioned, with the 2008 Northlake Area Plan. However, some of the existing development that's going on within this area and the adjacency just next door, the ability to kind of tie into that project and have a little bit more of a continual project between these two, we thought was a reasonable transition. We do recommend approval and we'll be happy to take any questions following the petitioner's presentation.
All right, Mr. Fox? Mr. Fox, we're pulling up your deck now, so when it's up, we'll be ready to start.
There it is.
Okay, there you go. Mr. Fox?
All right, all right, Mayor, members of council, zoning committee members. First of all, thank you for your service. And I'd like to also thank staff for their working with my client, RK Investors, on this exciting project. If you can flip this slide. RK Investors are a local group that are native Charlotteans. They saw a vision in the Northlake area and they went through and executing that vision. Next slide. With this petition, we did hold the community meeting. I'm happy to say that no one attended. I have talked, spoken with Lonnie Newsom in the neighborhood, one of the neighborhood leaders, and he is in support of the petition. Next slide. The residents at Brookline, they were a vision of my clients when they took on this project. They brought this property out of foreclosure in 2013. It was a failed neighborhood. They came up with a vision and transitioned that neighborhood into a vibrant neighborhood that now has single-family and multifamily homes, that property now, and also shares a UR2 zoning designation. Next slide. It was a true success story. Next slide. You'll see that is the residents at Brookline. When you look on the right corner, you'll see where some of the residential homes are still being built in that property. Across from the street is the Proximity North Development. Next slide. The Proximity North was a 235 Class A, unit Class A apartment development that continues the Brooklines, the residents at Brooklines. Next slide. This proposal appends to the Proximity North similar architectural, similar structures utilizing some existing infrastructure improvements to append to that and just adds two more units to that development. Next slide. This is the Proximity North apartment, architectural renderings. Next slide. Again, as Dave mentioned, this is approximately five-acre site. Goes from R3 to UR2. And it will continue the vision to create upscale living in this core. The next slide. Next slide. This is showing how the area has developed and the multifamily uses that exist also shows Brookline and the Proximity North. Hope you can review the rest of the slides and I hope you can support this rezoning. Thank you.
It's, it's, okay, sorry about that, Mr. Fox. Did you finish? This, okay.
Two more slides. I had a personal timer that went off a little early.
Yeah, well, you called it. I was just like, you know, that was it, so.
If you go to the, if you go to the next slide, next one. And this is, these are the two buildings and they will have 84 units, 42 each in each building. Next slide. And this is a site plan. One thing interesting about the site plan, it does maintain open space on the front of the property, so the property sits back off of Reims Road. And next slide. And that's the elevations that will match the existing units there. Next slide. Again, next slide.
All right, that's, that's pretty much it, Mr. Fox. Thank you. All right, are there questions for Mr. Fox? Mr. Graham? Would you like, do you have any questions?
No, Madam Mayor, I spoke with the petitioner earlier in today. My questions are satisfied.
Any other questions from the council?
Move to close.
All right, we have a motion to close and a second. All in favor, Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
And everyone else say yes and we are closed.
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is Petition Number 31. Petition 2020-015 by McShane Partners for approximately a quarter of an acre located on the eastern side of Park Drive. It's in District 1. The current zoning is multifamily residential for, is that 43 units an acre? 43 units an acre. And proposed zoning is mixed-use development optional. Staff recommends approval upon resolution of outstanding issues. We'll have the staff present. We have three people signed up in favor for the three minutes. That is Jeffrey Kangrow, Mimi Williams, and Danielle Donna Hugh. So we'll go ahead and start. And then Mr. Kangrow, if you can come to the, get ready for that after the staff presentation.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. 2020-015, just under a quarter of an acre, stuck back on Park Drive, just off of Clement and 7th Street and Lamar Avenue. The existing zoning is, as we mentioned, R43 MF. They're looking at MODO. You can see we've got some MODO just adjacent to this piece, really on both sides, on the long side of this odd-shaped parcel and then on that point, the triangle there on Park. You've got MODO existing in both of those areas. And this would continue that MODO zoning along Park Drive. It is part of the Elizabeth Area Revitalization Plan from 2011. We do recommend residential office uses for the subject site. This petition itself proposes a 6,600-square-foot office building. We do have residential dwelling unit over the office itself. It does provide, proposed to provide parking, be it two spaces on the site and then some recessed spaces on Park Drive, as well as some leased spaces and bicycle parking on the site as also. Doesn't limit building height to 50 feet 4 inches. Does provide some architectural design standards, prohibits eating, drinking, entertainment establishments as a permitted use. So even though it's allowed in mud, this petition would prohibit that as part of this development. Do propose ingress and egress off Park Drive in an existing alleyway, as well as a new six-foot sidewalk and eight-foot planting strip. The petition is consistent with the area plan for office residential land uses. However, some of the potential retail uses would not be consistent with the plan. However, we do still feel comfortable. We have that EDEE prohibition. That'd be part of the conditions of the plan, so we do feel like that's a good prohibition in the conditional notes and we do recommend approval. Just some outstanding issues to work through related to land use, transportation, and site and building design. But feel confident we can continue to work through those between now and the decision and we'll be happy to take any questions following presentations from the petitioner.
All right, Mr. Kangrow?
Very much. The overview was very in-depth.
Can, I can't hear you. Can you speak into your phone?
Yes, can you hear me all right now?
No, a little bit louder, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm just going to say the staff overview was very in-depth. Don't really have anything to add. Appreciate everybody's time and look forward to working with the staff to get this project.
All right, Ms. Williams, would you like to speak?
Sure, I just wanted to express that the, our client is very invested in this piece of property, planning on having an office as well as a residence there. So I just wanted to, hopefully staff will recommend moving this forward.
They did. Ms. Danielle Donna Hugh, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity and we look forward to having a business and residence there and hopefully you will recommend approval.
All right, thank you very much. This is in District 1. Mr. Eggleston, do you have any questions?
Just one note and ask, I guess. If the notes in our book are correct, this building is celebrating its 100th birthday this year. And I don't know that it's necessarily historically significant architecturally or in the story of Charlotte, but I would encourage the owners of the building to contact Stuart Graham, the folks of the Historic Landmarks Commission, and at least allow them the opportunity to document the building or get any information or materials or things from it that might be of any value to telling that history somewhere down the road. And any nods to, to the building that is there now in the new building would be, I think, greatly appreciated by the Elizabeth community and by me, so thank you.
Okay.
Second that.
Yeah, that's a point. Thank you.
Okay, we had, Mr. Winston said that was a great idea. Is there any, any further questions by the council? Hearing none. Mr. Eggleston? All right, and a second, please? Okay, a second to that? Somebody second it. Thank you. So, Mayor Protem, close the public hearing?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira? Mr. Mitchell? Yes. Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
If the remainder of you would say yes, we're done.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, our next petition is Item Number 32. 2020-011 by Mr. Gosal, I believe that would be correctly saying it. Approximately 1.3 acres located west of Margaret Wallace Road. It's in District 5. The current zoning is our residential four units per acre. Urban residential conditional is the requested zoning and the staff recommends approval upon resolution of outstanding issues. And then we have the petitioner to speak following the staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 2020-11, 1.35 acres. It's on Margaret Wallace Road between Glenn Verdy and Melrose Cottage Drive. This petition is currently zoned R4. They're looking to go to a UR1 conditional district. The petition itself is part of the District, East District Plan, which is from 1990. Does recommend single-family up to four dwelling units per acre. However, due to the date and age of this plan, we do use the general development policies to evaluate any increase in density. The policy guidelines for this did allow for, I believe, up to six units per acre for this project. So we would be within the guidelines for the general development policies. Even though we're outside of the District Plan recommendation, we would have consistency with that GDP. Just to talk a little bit about the project itself. The project proposes up to seven single-family detached dwellings. We've got 40-foot building heights maximums committed to, which is typical of a single-family zoning district. We do have construction of improved streetscape along Margaret Wallace, as well as screening along the west, north, and eastern property lines. That way, we'd have a little bit of a buffer between the existing single-family attached and the single-family homes on Glenn Verdy Court. We also have cutoff fixtures for any lighting and architectural design guidelines, including raised entryways and usable porches and stoops. Staff does recommend approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation environment, site and building design. Again, it's inconsistent with the single-family dwelling units up to, or four dwelling units per acre, excuse me, but it is consistent with the general development policies for up to six dwelling units per acre. And again, staff does recommend approval and we'll be happy to take any questions following a presentation from the petitioner.
All right, Mr. Gosal, you have three minutes to speak to the petition.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the staff for working with us through the different reviews and iterations and getting the final plan out there. And I wanted to mainly be here to answer any questions or any clarifications needed on this particular project.
All right, thank you. This is in District 5. Mr. Newton?
Mayor, I haven't had a chance to speak with the petitioner. I look forward to speaking with you as we proceed through this process in the coming month. Did receive an email from the community and I will be following up on that as well. My question revolves around the environmental issue under our outstanding issues in our materials. I wanted to ask, where is the stormwater conveyance on site? And then maybe follow up regarding stormwater impact, if you have any information on that. And then what would occur? And maybe we can talk a little bit more offline about what would occur if good faith efforts didn't mitigate stormwater impact, Dave. But just wanted to ask that initial question about where the stormwater conveyance in particular is and do we have more information pertaining to stormwater impact on site?
Yeah, and I'll have to defer that question over to folks in our stormwater group. Be happy to follow up with them following this meeting and get some more information from them. Maybe if we need to sit down and schedule some time to just kind of catch up with them, either on the phone or virtually. either on the phone or virtually, council member would even be happy to do that, so we can try and get those questions answered between now and the decision for you.
And I would appreciate that. Thank you. And I have no further questions, Madam Mayor.
All right. Mr. Eggleston? Mr. Eggleston? Oh, I'm sorry. All right, you move to close. We have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, Mr. Driggs?
We've had a conventional request here. We're going from a BD conditional plan and some I-one zoning, as well as some R-three single-family residential zoning, to just an O-two general office zoning. So again, no conditions, no site plan to be considered for this one. The Southwest District Plan in this area from nineteen ninety-one does recommend office land uses for this site and the surrounding general area. So we are consistent with that land use recommendation for the plan. We do recommend approval. Again, a conventional petition, so no conditional plan to consider here. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. And we don't have any other presentations, so it'll be just questions for me, I suppose.
All right. I have, Mr. Newton has asked to be recognized. Mr. Newton?
Madam Mayor, I didn't put my hand down.
Oh, okay. That's okay, then. All right. Ms. Watlington, as, do you have any comments or questions?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, could you make me a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second.
Second. All right, starting, Mr. Graham. This is a motion to close.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Absolutely.
If everyone else would say yes, that would appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
I agree with my absolutely.
All right. The next petition is item thirty-four, twenty-twenty zero twenty-four by Dominion Realty Partners for approximately one point eight acres located south of Fairview, east of Barclay Downs. It's in District Six. The current zoning is office, and the proposed zoning is mixed-use development optional. Staff recommends approval. We have the staff presentation, and we have Mr. Brown and Ms. Grant from, I don't know if they're representing the petitioner, as well as Hillary Larson, who is, has signed up to speak. So we'll keep going.
All right.
Staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Twenty-twenty twenty-four is on Fairview Road. That's just about one point eight and a quarter acres. The site itself is just located here within the South Park Mall area. It is an existing building that we are looking to do some redevelopment of. The current zoning is for O-one. The proposed zoning is a mud optional district. The site itself is part of the South Park area plan, which does recommend single-family, multifamily, and office uses for the site. The residential density recommendation with those uses would be twenty DUA. The site itself is looking at three hundred and twenty-five multifamily units, so that density would, because of the size of the site, we're looking about a hundred and seventy-seven units per acre. But again, this is part of an integrated residential project within the building itself. We've got up to fifteen hundred square foot of non-residential uses on the ground floor. The building is also a hundred and eighty-five feet in height, which is sixty-five feet greater than mud standards allow. So that one of those optional provisions is to allow that increase. It is consistent with some of the existing building heights that have been developed in the area recently. So staff feels that that's a generally appropriate request. We do have a twenty-four-foot setback, which would allow for some new sidewalk, six-foot sidewalkings in an effort to preserve some of the existing trees along Fairview. We also are getting a financial support for pedestrian improvements as part of the South Park Loop Trail. Then also some contributions to the Charlotte Housing Trust Fund. We have a bus waiting pad and shelter that would be enhanced on Fairview Road, as well as some vehicle access from some shared driveways and turn lanes if we allowed, get some property owners within the area to agree to some underlying easements. We do have minimum five hundred square feet of open space feature at the corner of Fairview Road, so we'll have an open space element on the corner of the property. We do have architectural design standards. And then again, that optional provision for increased building height, and then just some language about not allowing, or requiring doors be recessed when they're at least twelve feet in a clear zone. So again, just some standard optional provisions, except for that height increase that we talked about a little bit earlier. Just to go through the proposal itself, you can just kind of get an idea of the architectural renderings for the building along Fairview Road, and some of the sidewalk improvements that would be included. There's a parking, a four-level parking deck that you can see proposed in this general area here. And again, overall, staff does recommend approval. There are actually no outstanding issues associated with this conditional site plan at the time of hearing. As we stated, is consistent with the recommendation for a mix of uses for the area. However, it does exceed that residential density. But as we're looking for urban infill development in this area, staff did feel that it was within good urban form and context, and we do recommend approval. And we'll be happy to take any questions following petitioner presentations.
All right. Mr. Brown?
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. I'll consolidate the time. I think the council and zoning committee, you've been at it a long time tonight, so thank you. Bridget Grant and I have been pleased to work with Dominion Realty Partners on this project. Dominion Realty is a leading signature developer of mixed-use projects, and is in fact in the process of completing a project near Ramir Bearden Park in the center city. This next slide, I think, will show a little bit of the location of the site in the context of what Dave's already reviewed. And again, we're pleased to have the staff support and the CDOT support of the petition. This next slide is important, and Dave mentioned this, a critical feature for South Park efforts of late has been this Loop Trail. And this shows the site in the context of that. We're pleased that Dominion Realty has also noted this, and is providing a contribution of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the support of the Loop Trail, which I think will also be a key feature for the pedestrian walkability, not only for South Park, but ultimately for the project as well. This next slide gives you a little flavor of the existing streetscape. Dave referenced those. Efforts will be made to preserve those existing mature trees. Move on to the next if I could. The next slide would then show you some of the benefits. I'm not going to go through these in the interest of time, but I do want to highlight the community engagement efforts that we've been involved in for a number of months, working particularly with the leadership of the South Park Association of Neighborhoods. And we appreciate all of their time and energy. We've had a lot of great dialogue. We appreciate the leadership's of support, and you've received a letter from Hillary Larson, who we will not have speak tonight, but has provided a lot of support. And we appreciate Councilor Bakari's efforts as well. The next slide, I'm not gonna, Dave reviewed this a little bit.
Mr. Brown, can I, is Ms. Larson going to speak tonight?
She is not going to speak, and so we're just gonna kind of.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I wanted to make sure that we recognized her. She does a lot of work. She ought to be recognized.
Right. So this was the site plan, as I mentioned, and you'll see the efforts of pedestrian upon Fairview, and possible improvements that we might be able to make on the circulation. The next slide also highlights some of these same types of efforts that are ongoing to make the site plan come alive in the broader fabric of South Park. Furthermore, this next one, again, will wrap up here, gives you a flavor of the elevations. Again, all of this is trying to make the walkability a real critical feature of this development. And all those features are consistent with what you are already aware of. Many of you have been involved in looking at this from the Urban Land Institute report of several years ago, to CNUP's efforts, the pedestrian efforts, all taking South Park and moving it from the old days of a suburban office park and with the mall, and more of a town center that Dave mentioned in his presentation. So in the interest of time, I'll pause here. We're excited about this. We're pleased with the community's support, and we thank staff and others for their efforts.
Thank you very much. This is in District Six, and I know Mr. Winston, but I wanted to recognize Mr. Bakari.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me?
I can certainly hear you.
I would like to just say, we didn't hear from her, but you mentioned it. Hillary Larson spanned the South Park Association of Neighborhoods. This is an organization that honestly, I count myself as a district rep, very, very lucky to have and be able to work with. And so much so that in many of your other districts, we've made connections and had conversations so that we can share the practices of really organizing multiple neighborhood associations and different things. And that's why you see a lot of these outcomes that we've made over the last three years in progress, be it the loop that you saw a picture of there and what that can do, but also paired with so many other things that are happening because of that group's great work, and because of the private sector and the development petition community's great work as well, all collaborating. So I just want to thank everyone for the hard work. I want to particularly thank these petitioners here for committing to, and seeing the value of the Loop and putting, it's not just a one-way sponsorship and contribution in. We have to figure out suggestion in this part of town, all parts of town, but this part of town particularly. And this is how we make it more walkable, more livable, connecting live, work, and play. And we don't have a lot of solutions other than this right now, and it is something that is very exciting, and I'm excited for the future of South Park. So I give a lot of kudos to these petitioners here for doing that, but also for understanding the importance of what is an unprecedented building. This is, as I understand it, outside of Uptown, one of the highest buildings of this nature outside of Uptown. So, understanding that, but understanding that contributions being made to affordable housing and our trust, and the importance of all that, it just hands down some great work. I know over the next month, there will be other things to complete, but I definitely wanted to just thank everyone for bringing, once again, a lot of pre-work to the table, so there's a lot of a unified voice in asking the district rep, and ultimately the broader council, what to do, what to vote on. Hopefully, that will finish out strong over the next month.
All right. Mr. Winston?
I was just commenting on Mr. Brown's technology setup. He is super clear. He just has to raise his camera to eye level, but you can't, apparently, Mr. Bakari is working with you on something else as well. So motion to close.
Well, I have one more speaker, Mr. Eggleston.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate a little bit of what Mr. Bakari said, and thank this developer and any developer that's looking not just to improve their site, but to improve the neighborhood around them and the community more broadly through investing in walkability and affordable housing and all that. So kudos to them.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Winston, you want to make that motion?
Motion to close.
Second? All right. All in favor of that motion? Mayor Protem?
Aye.
Ms. Eschmira? Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
If everyone else would say yes, we're done with that one. All right?
Yes.
Agenda item thirty-five. We have a petition twenty-twenty dash zero twenty-five by Suncap Property Group for approximately twenty-six acres located on the eastern side of Millhaven Lane, south of Sunset. It's in District Two. It's currently zoned as a commercial center. The requested rezoning is light industrial conditional. Staff recommends approval upon resolution of some revisions that are needed. And we have the staff presentation, Ms. Grant and Paxton Holler to speak in favor of the petitioner.
Madam Mayor, twenty-twenty twenty-five?
Excuse me, twenty-twenty twenty-five is about twenty-five acres, just under twenty-six acres. So we're continuing on our numbers theme this evening. Just off of Millhaven Lane, south of Sunset Road and Statesville Avenue. You can see we're kind of bounded between Millhaven and Statesville, running parallel up to Sunset with this site. The site itself currently is zoned CC for a commercial center. The proposed zoning is for an I-one conditional, which is light industrial. The Northeast District Plan from ninety-six does call for retail uses for this site. The petition itself, it proposes up to four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand square feet of warehousing, warehouse distribution, manufacturing, and office uses. Does have some prohibited uses such as outdoor storages, outdoor storage EDEEs, retail, shopping centers, auction sales, automobile, truck, and utility trailer runner, et cetera. So a lot of the less desirable uses that would be part of that district have been written out from this plan. We also are looking at a thirty-seven and a half foot buffer around the periphery of the site to give us some additional screening and buffering from some of the adjacent uses. We will get upgrades to Millhaven Lane with an eight-foot planting strip and six-foot sidewalk along that road, as well as left turn lanes on Millhaven into the site. We also are getting construction of a proposed public road between Statesville Road and Millhaven Lane. That's this proposed Public Street A that will run between the two and provide a connection between these two roads. Access will be off of Millhaven Lane and Statesville Road, and we do have a minimum of one prominent street-facing entrance to each public street, and it's, as well as specifications on building materials. Excuse me, it's been a long evening. We do recommend approval of this petition upon resolution of some outstanding technical issues related to transportation. That's mainly has to do with striping along Millhaven. As we had stated, the petition is inconsistent with the Northeast District Plan, but staff did feel that due to some of the existing uses and continuing development of this area, the location and proximity close to the interchange with eighty-five and Sunset Road, we do feel it was a reasonable request to consider. We do recommend approval, and we'll be happy to take any questions following the presentation from the petitioners.
All right. Ms. Grant? And Paxton Holler? Ms. Grant?
Good evening, Mayor Lyles, members of council, members of the zoning committee. Bridget Grant, land use consultant with Warren Van Allen. I'm actually here tonight with Paxton Holler and Brian Roller with Suncap Property Group. I'm gonna go ahead. Dave did a great job on the presentation, so I'm gonna go ahead and jump ahead. As he mentioned, we've got about a twenty-five acre site, and a lot of planned benefits that he featured. But on our next little, we're gonna make some additional changes in the effort to get everything a little more context-sensitive. They include commitments to locate service and loading areas to the interior of the site if multiple buildings are developed. We are prohibiting orienting any of the loading or truck ports to the new public streets, and will provide signage to direct truck traffic to enter the site at the northernmost entrance. We've also included this quick conceptual image. It's not included in the presentation, but we just wanted to give you an idea of what the power, or what the building could look like when oriented along Public Street A. I think Dave mentioned, the proposed use is gonna generate significantly less traffic than what's anticipated by the proposed uses for the site. And in closing, I just want to highlight, conditional rezoning has a lot of benefits, and we like to look at it in four areas: community engagement, design standards, certainty on development, and public benefit. We had a required community meeting. It was actually the last face-to-face, in-person community meeting I was able to participate in. We continue to work with the adjacent neighbors, and will continue to do so through the construction and development process. We included design standards that committed to the building materials and commitment to site orientation and details. And in terms of certainty of development, unlike conventional zoning, we've established maximum square footagees and identified those uses that are less desirable for the site. We are including the new Public Street A to the southern portion of the site, lowering traffic, creating an employment opportunity, and we even had some of the adjacent businesses reach out to us and say they supported the rezoning. So with that, I am happy to answer any of your questions.
All right. This is in District Two. Mr. Graham, do you have any questions, or does any member of council?
No, I'm getting out of there.
All right. Any other council members?
Motion to close.
I have a motion to close and a second. All, Mr. Driggs, this is on a motion to close. Mr. Bakari? Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Everybody else is yes. Thank you. All right. Item number thirty-six is a rezoning petition twenty-twenty zero twenty-eight by Naisha Weaver for approximately five point three acres located at the intersection of Monroe on the western side of the property. It's in District Five. The current zoning is single-family residential with three units per acre. The proposed zoning is institutional. Staff recommends approval of this petition. We do not have a speaker, so the staff presentation. And then, if the council has questions.
Piece of property right at the corner, crossing the school and developing areas right there around Wallace Road and Conference Drive. This existing church is looking to rezone again from an R-three, single-family residential to an institutional. This one, I did get a little confused with our residential zone churches going institutional earlier. I'd mentioned one that was looking for a daycare use, and Mr. Brown had corrected and said they were looking for more of some cafe uses and other things. This one is looking to add a daycare to the site. Again, the current zoning would not allow for that, would allow for the church, but not in addition of a standalone daycare use as well. So they are looking to rezone to institutional. The Independence Boulevard area plan recommends residential uses of twelve DUA for the site. But again, when we look at institutional zoning districts and recommendations, we don't see those in all of our plans.
in all of our plans, and they don't usually fall in line with some of those recommendations. But this use is, would be consistent with what's going on existing out there and what's being proposed, would fit within the general context of the area. Staff does recommend approval of this petition. It is a conventional petition, so again, no plan or conditions to be associated with it. While it is inconsistent, we do feel that it's currently a consistent use, would allow for the continued use of that church and allow them the option to develop a daycare as part of their campus there. So be happy to answer any questions. That would be it for today.
Are there any questions? Mr. Eggleston? Mr. Eggleston?
Just a, yes, ma'am, just a quick shout-out to the pastor at Ben Salem, Dominique Faulkner, who several of us know from when he ran for council a few years ago.
Yes, Dominique.
Yeah. It's an interesting thing. I have an aunt that was married in that church. I bet, so, I mean, I can't even imagine how long ago that was. So it's amazing, the changes that have happened in there. All right. Did I have a motion to close?
That, Madam Mayor, motion to close.
All right. So, Mr. Graham, motion to close? Ms. Watlington? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Mm-hmm.
All right. If everybody else would say yes, thank you. All right. Petition, agenda item number 37, petition 2020-031 by the Creek Kids Zone. Wow. Approximately three acres located on the western side of Sugar Creek, north of Cushman. It's in District One. The current zoning is institutional conditional, and the proposed zoning is institutional. Staff recommends approval of this petition. And we don't have any speakers, so we'll go ahead and let the staff do their thing.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. 2020-31, our last petition of the evening, just over three acres, is on West Sugar Creek Road, currently zoned institutional CD. The petitioner is requesting to just zone out of that conditional district and just go to a conventional institutional district, give them a little bit more flexibility with the property, and be able to do some things on the property with the existing use that wouldn't be permitted under that condition. Staff doesn't have any concerns with what they're requesting or loss of any of those conditions as part of that old CD plan. It is consistent with the central district plan, which does recommend institutional uses for this site, likely based on the existing use that had been there. The adopted land use policy actually was amended by that 2004 rezoning to institutional, so that's where we get that plan consistency. Again, staff doesn't have any concerns with the request to zone out of those conditions into just a conventional institutional district. It is consistent with the plan recommendation. Like I said, we do recommend approval, and we'll be happy to answer any questions on this one.
All right. Are there any questions on this petition? Hearing no questions, can I have a motion?
Motion to close.
And adjourn? A motion to close this hearing?
Well, we got to close the hearing first.
Do we have to, really? I was just hopeful. Okay. All right. So a motion to close. Mr. Eggleston moved, and someone second.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Isel?
Yes.
Ms. Eschmira?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes, Lord.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
If everyone else would say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
I just wanted to say that the public can submit written comments to the clerk on any of the petitions that we've heard until 11:59 PM tomorrow by going to cityclerk@charlottenc dot gov. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Mayor Council topics?
This is a zoning meeting. Hush. 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 All right. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
All right.